Anything for you. You can have one of each. Would you like one of each?
Uh.
I'll give you one of each.
I'm very proud of it.
Oh, good. They all went on tonight. Oh, my God. First time in forever. All three went on at the same time.
Amazing.
That's a good sign. They just got beat. That's nice.
Yeah, he might have called me, but I left my phone at work. It's coming back from a food bank. I'm on a boat over there. We have ended some way.
No.
Just a little tap, but I'm in a truck and she's in a car. She's not hurt. I said, you're not hurt? I had to call.
Until your dogs were a lawyer.
Yeah. Well, I got. Right. My neck. It's later when they're not, they go home and their husband says.
Their husband says, yeah, you don't look so good.
So what about the GIs? Is that good on GIs?
It's two here.
Are there good ones? How many? That's good. What do I call them, the bridge and grads?
No, no.
Two of them back. So I can just do 88 high, right? That's all you need before?
Yeah, that's they're, he's looking for a special permit and I really step out.
Like.
Yep. Okay.
One public. Probably about older. Have you ever do with them yet?
I might do now.
Can't think of anything. If I have the whole premium, I can see who's looking.
Yeah, so.
Do you know any of them?
No. None of the GIs. So we'll see.
Last sentence.
But I do have to talk to Katie about.
Okay. And we'll get going in just a second as soon as our last member makes it into the, makes it through the door.
If it truly is going to be a televised GIs person.
Look at three or four sentences up. You can do requirement if you must not have made.
Use the, no as a.
Shanahan Industries.
No, as a.
Statement, you must.
Use it on the iPad.
Shanahan Industries. Oh, with the rubber.
Yeah.
Well, no, it would be to them.
Yeah, yeah. It could be double.
He's also a section. I was trying to. To that thing.
It really isn't. When you say the whole town, it really isn't the whole town.
Artificial fingertip. Artificial fingertip.
Maybe open space.
Oh, actually, yeah.
There's a way. But the newest thing was a couple of years ago. A couple of years ago, Mike Paul came down. He was asking me about.
Hey, Henry, I'm gonna have to recuse for one of these things, the 88 High Street. So I see you take that one.
Well.
Okay, you can be the chair.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the January 9th, 2019 meeting of the Chumsford Planning Board. We are, as always, being recorded. And with that, let's see, the first item on the agenda is 152 Turnpike Road. Attorney Robbins, you're on.
Good evening. We have one slate. We have an A and R first for a request for endorsement. I can't see how to read this. Yes. This is just a request for an A and R endorsement for the existing lot at 152 Turnpike. It meets all of the endorsement requirements. And just for the board's knowledge, the reason that we're doing this is because we're getting ready to file for a special permit for this project. And during its duration, we've actually gone through three town meetings with at least two items that have gone against or tried to change the B A O D and the C E I O D. So we're making sure that our zoning is frozen as of today before we go into town meeting season so that nothing affects this lot for at least three years, which I do not think is the time it's going to take to get through the zoning process. But I want to make sure for at least those purposes, the lot is frozen. So it meets all the A and R requirements and I'm just requesting the board endorsement.
Great. What's your, what's your frontage on it?
I will turn over to Mr. Hammer.
Yeah, just I, I could bring it up myself, but I'm lazy.
Yeah, it's 180.3.
180.3, okay.
And what's required for frontage in RM?
150.
150. Oh, it's RM? Is it 150?
It's RM.
But I think it makes it. I'm pretty sure it meets it.
I think it's 150.
Yeah, my recollection is 150.
It needs all requirements.
Yep. That's why.
Motion?
Fire away.
Motion to approve A and R for 152 Turnpike Road. And is there anything else that we need to?
Yeah, with no determination.
Just zoning.
Determination.
Motion second. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Before we actually vote, let me introduce our new member, Mike Walsh. This is your first.
Okay.
Welcome to it. With that, all in favor?
Hi.
You get to vote. You can vote in that room.
Okay. Opposed? Okay, that motion passes. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
No, I don't need that. Colleen's got the other one I want.
And now for the meet.
If it's, if it's actually working.
It's, it's working. I'm just trying to.
Again, for the record, my name's Attorney Melissa Robbins. I'm from the law firm, Up to Sheena Farrell. I know that you've seen me a lot on the site and we're here tonight for actually just a discussion on your inclusionary zoning bylaw. For the benefit of your new member, I will tell you, we've, we've been here a few times and I say jokingly, but we really have. This is our third determination of applicability for the site. The previous owner had a nine-unit determinate, determination of applicability that had a payment in lieu of option. The second project was a 15-unit apartment building that had, was all of the affordable units constructed within it. And then this is the six-unit project that just got preliminary determination two meetings ago at November 28th. At that meeting, I had taken the position that this would not be subject to inclusionary zoning. And that was because there's a section of the bylaw that says if you're not asking for bonus units, that you do not need to comply with the underlying zoning. Mr. Haverty, Town Council, has disagreed with this position and therefore I'm here tonight to talk about asking a request for waiver for inclusionary zoning. Just, and I'll hit on a little highlight reel of why this six-unit project is so much better than the other projects as to conformance with the surrounding neighborhood. The height on these buildings, Colleen, can you afford a little bit? Do you have all the slides or just this slide?
Yeah, I do. I brought, which, which way?
Go towards the architectural plans, towards the end of the presentation.
Mike?
Yep.
Do we have a letter for this that I read?
There is a letter. I'm gonna get it read in shortly. It's been unusual on a COI.
Right, and I was.
Discussion, but I think it's one that we do want to read in.
I was gonna read it in as well.
Oh, okay. If you're gonna read it in, that's fine.
Which one do you want?
That one, that one's fine. Or one more? That's one?
Yeah.
That one's fine.
Yeah.
So this is the type of unit we're planning on building at the six-unit development. It's lower in height than the other buildings. It may allow for first floor living space. It allows for 60% open space within the site. It's the lowest amount of pavement building and impervious on any of the sites that we have proposed. And it has a 30-foot setback to the rear, which is important to the stone gate develop, the stone gate of butters that live behind us, that we're really trying to make as much space in the back that we can to give them an adequate buffer. The underlying RM zoning for this site allows for one unit for every 5,000 square feet of land area. And here we have about 32,000 square feet of land area. So we're asking for six units on this lot. One second.
How many square feet are the, are the houses?
About 1,600. They're smaller in size. Yeah, and really there's, they're meant to be starter homes or downsized units, which is why we're trying to get living areas on the first floor. So Mr. Haverty made the determination that this was subject to inclusionary zoning. And then the question was asked between that meeting and this meeting, if it is subject to the inclusionary zone and can it be waived? And Mr. Haverty said, yes, it can be waived. It's waived on a project-by-project basis. And I think that's very important for this board to understand. I understand this board may be nervous about setting precedent by waiving inclusionary zoning, but there is no precedent to be served here. Every project is looked at on a project-by-project basis. That is the core of the inclusionary zoning bylaw. That is the core of the COI bylaw. And that is the core of the B A O D bylaw. It does not set precedent. This board has the power to do what they want within those bylaws, within the regulations, and that includes the waiver of inclusionary or reducing the inclusionary zoning bylaw. Other sites have been looked at for their site constraints and they've been lowered as well. And that's what we're asking for here, is that you look at this individual site, look at our individual constraints, and consider a full waiver of this bylaw.
Okay.
As I stated, this, this project complies with the underlying zoning. It's six units. It ties in with a small neighborhood and will blend in with more of the stone gate. I'm calling it the mini stone gate, a new mini stone gate in the front of that development. The applicant, Mr. Norton and his father, have moved forward with this six-unit project even though the other two options are actually more financially feasible for the development. And you may ask yourself why? And that's because from the direction of this board from the beginning, and he's been trying to work with the neighbors out there for two years, he's trying to build something that's reactive to this board's comments and can fit into the neighborhood and be a good, sound developer. And he wants to continue his reputation in Chumsford. He's trying to build something here that fits in to the design. The issue with the inclusionary zoning bylaw, especially with this site, and I think it's unique to this site, that it forces a larger development. In order to carry the cost of either paying something or building an affordable unit, we actually have to build a bigger development. And I don't have to think, I don't even have to talk to this board and about what ifs, because you've seen what they could look like. They could be a nine-unit townhouse building with garages underneath that are higher, or they could be a 15-unit rental development. Both of those fit into the bylaw. That's not what we want to construct. The proposal to build this with any sort of requirement for the inclusionary zoning bylaw is uneconomic. And to Mr. Chair and Mr. Parley's comment of, we have a letter here from your Chumsford Housing Authority. I knew this board's next question would be, well, that's great, Melissa, that you say it's uneconomic, but who else in the town has had the opportunity to review it and say so? So we, my client did have an opportunity to sit down with the Chumsford Housing Authority last week. And you do have an email in the board's packet from Mr. Hettison of the Chumsford Housing Authority. And Mr. Chair, I don't know if you'd like to read that into record or if you'd like to read it into record.
Well, let's see. It wasn't terribly long, as I recall.
No, it's short. It's just one paragraph.
Yeah.
I don't, I didn't print it, but I do have it. You want to read it?
Okay, if you have a copy, go ahead and read it into the record for us if you would.
I'm happy to read it. It states, "Good afternoon. Based upon my review of the currently proposed development of six units of 152 Turnpike Road, the Chumsford Housing Authority believes it would be uneconomic to provide a payment in lieu of affordability or an affordable component. Prior iterations, as a larger scale, more dense development would have allowed for a payment in lieu of affordability or affordable units. The Chumsford Housing Authority wanted to provide this information to the Planning Board in relationship to Section 195, 137 D2. Thank you for allowing our agency to provide this input. David G. Hettis, David J. Hettison, excuse me, Executive Director."
Okay.
So I know that we're ahead of the game here. You know, I know that we have not yet filed for a special permit. And I went to the Chumsford Housing Authority to get this determination because I cannot proceed on the six-unit development without some input on the board that they would be inclined to waive the inclusionary zoning, zoning bylaw. I wouldn't waste the time and efforts of my client and I wouldn't waste the time and efforts of this board, because we simply cannot proceed and comply with that section of the bylaw. I, I know that the inclusion, inclusionary zoning bylaw is very important, but the provision for waiver is there for a project just like this, this unique situation. I don't think there's any other project in the B A O D or the C E I O D that has not asked for bonus units. This project has not asked for any bonus units. This relief will allow for development that's complimentary and appropriate to the neighborhood, will add to the neighborhood appeal, fulfills the economic potential of the site, and fulfills all of the requirements of the B A O D, which is really the intent of this board. Would that, I request the board consider waiving the requirement so we can proceed with the six-unit plan. I know the board can't make the actual finding till we apply for the special permit, but I would ask that all the board members entertain the idea of giving a discussion this evening and telling us which the way they would vote on this item. And we're happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Attorney Robbins. Well, so I think the procedure here is gonna be a straw poll, as Attorney Robbins pointed out. We can't really adjudicate anything tonight in a, in a binding fashion, but I think it's an eminently reasonable request. What do people on the board feel about this?
I guess I'll start. Given the box of facts that we have and how we've looked at multiple projects for this applicant, and we've concluded as a board, at least applicability, we've provided for the six units as shown up on the screen. The issue about inclusionary zoning is, yes, that is a, a great concern going forward. One, because, yes, are we gonna be setting a precedent, as Melissa has noted. I do not believe that we would be opening us, ourselves up for concern going forward, given the fact that Town Council has provided us with a letter basically deferring over to Chumsford Housing Authority and suggesting that it would be, to this board is required to consult with the Housing Advisory Board and Chumsford Housing Authority. David, the Chumsford Housing Authority, is not, you know, from my experience, is going to leave any money on the table. That's just not gonna happen.
That is very true.
So whatever happened for them to get this letter from David?
Yeah.
This carries a lot of weight in my mind. So therefore, I, I would be comfortable moving forward and waiving the inclusionary bylaw for this particular project only.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I mean, I'll go next. I agree with Don. I think they've listened to our comments, meeting after meeting. And I actually like this better. I think it's better fit for the neighborhood and I would, would agree with Don and the CH, Chumsford Housing Authority, to waive it.
I, I don't know, I don't know if I would waive it totally. I would do a greatly reduced one, just so to say we never took and totally gave it away. A semi-token payment of some sort. I think the neighbors would be a lot happier with this. I think it's a much better suit for the neighborhood. Yes, all that has to be taken for, you know, I'm probably not the one to take and put the number out there, but you know, a small token of some sort. I don't think it has to be very much, but I think we should do a, a small token so it's just not totally forgot.
And Nancy?
Yeah, we've, we've been through a lot of iterations on this project. And they've been done under the COI. The COI is a, is a negotiation process. The Planning Board has pushed back hard on the, the developers for this. And they've listened. They've listened to the community. They've listened to the feedback from the board. They've listened to our concerns over, over density, over height. They could build something much larger and much more obnoxious to the community that would be more financially lucrative to them. So I'm not inclined to push for any significant payments in terms of payment in lieu, because I think that this is the negotiation, our side of the give, for what they've given up here, to be compatible with the neighborhood. But I also like Henry's comment about not going free.
Okay.
I'll go. I agree with Donald and Tim. I live in a neighborhood and that is the best fit for my neighborhood, I'll tell you right now. And the letter from Town Council says you should consult with the Housing Authority.
Which has been done.
Which, I agree with David and I agree with Donald. I know David and I know who he is.
We all do.
And I know, you know, the, the cost of the projects and everything. I just think we should just waive the payment in lieu. That's my opinion.
Anybody else?
I'd like to go with what Henry was talking, of giving it reduced. It don't, it doesn't have to be a lot, but it gotta be at least something. So we can't, down the road, every time we get into these things, we get the Housing Authority calling us up saying, make sure we get ours, make sure we get ours. You know what I mean? And now they're saying, you gotta throw this in and we want him for nothing. It's, it gotta be something there.
All right.
It don't have to be a whole lot. It could be something.
Mike?
Have the neighbors looked at this already?
Oh, yes, it's been through. This is not the first time for us.
That was my only question.
As a matter of fact, a procedural question here. Is this a continuation of the COI discussion or is this a separate discussion? Did we, we already?
You issued.
Already issued the COI. So this is strictly, this is strictly.
You did not issue the COI for the six unit. You've issued applicability.
But we could, we could do that tonight.
No.
No, we can't. That's, that's still got to be.
They have not applied yet.
I just want, okay, so that procedurally, this is pre-COI application.
Right, right. They're trying, I think, as, as the attorney mentioned, they're trying to figure out whether they should apply.
Whether it's worth it, yeah.
We got a preliminary determination about applicability for the six.
Right.
Have implied for the special permit.
Right, okay, that's where we're at. Okay, understood. Okay, well, I, I think Attorney Robbins is absolutely correct. Given the way the COI is put together, there is no precedential value here. I know, just out of curiosity, what would the, the standard amount have been?
Well, it's, it's kind of funny that you ask, because there's no difference between the six and the nine.
Right.
The way that it's written, this would have to pay, I believe, $250,000. It'd be the equivalent of two units. It just doesn't work.
Yeah.
And we pay the same whether it's the bigger project or the smaller project, and it doesn't work on this project. And can I just ask for clarification on what?
Yes.
Token means? Because token can mean a lot of different things to people.
Yeah, well, I was gonna get to that.
I mean, is that the board saying we should, you know, put a couple thousand dollars towards a, a Chumsford Housing Authority project? Is that what you mean by a token?
I can't speak for the whole board, but I'm, that's what I'm thinking. The number that popped in my head, you know what I mean? Something that's gonna hurt somebody, something.
Okay. I just want to be clear.
I'm thinking maybe 10% of what would normally be.
Well, that would be 20, and that sounds kinda hot.
Even that's a good chunk of money. That's, that can be better used for landscaping or something like that.
I know. I was more in line with Henry.
Okay.
Couple, two, three grand and it's.
Would, would that, would that be a doable thing on your part?
Yes.
Okay. Would some?
That makes everybody, you know what I mean?
All right.
Then the next guy that comes in, he's not gonna want it for nothing.
Okay, let's, let's take a straw poll on this. Why don't you give it a number, Henry?
All right, five grand.
Okay, five grand.
Straw poll. Would anybody be opposed to it?
Total, five grand, not per unit?
No, that's the total for the project.
Total project. Colleen, what are you doing over there?
I'm just smiling.
Colleen?
Colleen.
Colleen?
What?
What are you doing over there?
Nothing.
All right.
Okay. All right, we have that. A straw, this is straw poll. This is not an official vote. Everybody understands that. But I'll second, hey, how many people would be happy with that? Would, would, would consider, as we go forward, taking that position?
$5,000.
$5,000, total. Total, with a whole shebang.
I'd still like to see a waiver.
Yeah, I'd like to. Well, yeah, but I, I understand the other point, too. Is that doable for you guys?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And I said it doesn't have to be made.
Yeah, that was, that was good. And, and sometime later, you're gonna have to tell me just how you talk David Hettison into that.
Thank you very much, members of the board. I appreciate it.
Okay. Good luck.
When David doesn't want it, can we put that in the 53G?
Yeah, really.
All right, very good. All right, I think we got to a good conclusion there. Thank you, folks. Next one up, 35 Hunt Road, a minor site plan. Let's see, a structure with an additional 3,500 square feet resulting in a total building of just under 7,500 square feet. And.
Links aren't working.
No, none of the links are working.
It's not the first time it's done that.
That's why we can't have nice things.
Yeah.
Colleen, the links aren't working in the document.
I was gonna say, I.
That's your issue with your iPad.
No, this one's not working.
All three of us, none of them are working.
They're not working.
Go into your settings and turn on the internet.
No, it is on internet. I mean.
It says it's, in first, it's on internet.
I was gonna ask you that, because it's, it's saying it's on internet, but they're not. Are you guys able to click on your?
That side of the.
I couldn't click on it either. You click on your.
It's not working.
No, I know, but can you click on the tabs?
I can't get on the links.
No, nobody can get on the links.
What am I doing wrong here? We may have a server down.
Refresh?
I did bring a bunch of plans, just in case.
There's, there's some in the files.
I don't trust the old computer electronics.
Fair enough. Is there something we gotta turn on?
It's good, sir.
Shouldn't be. Wi-Fi, the Wi-Fi is established, so we should be okay.
I mean, it looks like it was uploaded as plain text.
My links aren't working either.
Go with paper.
Wi-Fi is on. Throw these things out.
All right, now.
He has paper copies, right?
Okay, yeah, if we could.
I'm an old timer at heart, so I get all paper stuff. So, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kenneth Lanier, Cornerstone Land Consultants, representing the applicant, which is Cunningham Machine. They're located at 35 Hunt Road. We're before you this evening to, I guess, get the official approval through a minor site plan after our original review with you folks back on April 11th of last year. I know, just out of curiosity, what would the, the standard amount have been?
Well, it's, it's kinda funny that you ask because there's no difference between the six and the nine.
Right.
The way that it's written, this would have to pay, I believe, $250,000. It'd be the equivalent of two units. It just doesn't work. And we pay the same whether it's the bigger project or the smaller project. And it doesn't work on this project. And can I just ask for clarification on what token means? Because token can mean a lot of different things to people.
Yeah, well, I was gonna get to that.
I mean, is that the board saying we should, you know, put a couple thousand dollars towards a Chemsford Housing Authority project? Is that what you mean by a token?
I can't speak for the whole board, but that's what I'm thinking. The number that popped in my head, you know what I mean? Something that's gonna hurt somebody, something...
Okay, I just wanna be clear.
I'm thinking maybe 10% of what would normally be...
Well, that would be 20, and that sounds kinda hot.
Even that's a good chunk of money. That's, they can be better used for landscaping or something like that.
I know, I was more in line with Henry.
Okay.
Couple, two, three grand, and it's...
Would, would that, would that be a doable thing on your part?
Yes.
Okay. Would some...
That makes everybody, you know what I mean?
All right.
Then the next guy that comes in, he's not gonna want it for nothing.
Okay, let's, let's take a straw poll on this. Why don't you give it a number, Henry?
All right, five grand.
Okay, five grand.
Straw poll, would anybody be opposed to it?
Total, five grand, not per unit?
No, that's the total for the project.
Total project. Colleen, what are you doing over there?
I'm just smiling.
Colleen?
Colleen.
Colleen?
What?
What are you doing over there?
Nothing.
All right.
Okay. All right, we have that, a straw, this is straw poll. This is not an official vote, everybody understands that. But I'll second, hey, how, how many people would be happy with that? Would, would, would consider, as we go forward, taking that position?
$5,000.
$5,000 bucks, total, total, with a whole shebang.
I'd still like to see a wave.
Yeah, I'd like to see. Well, yeah, I, I understand the other point, too. Is that doable for you guys?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And I said it doesn't have to be made.
Yeah, that was, that was good. And, and sometime later, you're gonna have to tell me just how you talk David Hitterson into that.
Thank you very much, members of the board, I appreciate it.
Okay. Good luck.
When David doesn't want it, can we put that in the 53G?
Yeah, really.
All right, very good. All right, I think we got to a good conclusion there. Thank you, folks. Next one up, 35 Hunt Road, a minor site plan. Let's see, a structure with an additional 3,500 square feet, resulting in a total building of just under 7,500 square feet. And...
No, none of the links are working.
It's not the first time it's done that.
That's why we can't have nice things.
Not done, you know?
Yeah.
Colleen, the links aren't working in the document.
I was gonna say, I...
That's your issue with your iPad.
No, this one's not working.
All three of us, none of them working there.
They're not working.
Go into your settings and turn on the internet.
No, it is on internet, I mean...
It says it's, in first, it's on internet.
I was gonna ask you that, 'cause it's, it's saying it's on internet, but they're not... Are you guys able to click on your...
It's on that side of the chair.
I couldn't click on it either.
You click on your...
It's not working.
No, I know, but can you click on the tabs?
I can't get on the links.
No, nobody can get on the links. All right, what am I doing wrong here? We may have a server down.
Refresh?
I did bring a bunch of plans, just in case.
There's, there's some in the files.
I don't trust the old computer electronics.
Fair enough. Is there something we gotta turn on?
No, it's good, it's good, sir.
Shouldn't be. Wi-Fi, the Wi-Fi is established, so we should be okay.
I mean, it looks like it was uploaded as plain text.
My links aren't working either.
Go with paper.
Wi-Fi is on, throw these things out.
All right, now...
He has paper copies, if you'll...
Okay, yeah, if we could...
I'm an old timer at heart, so I get all paper stuff. So, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kenneth Lanier, Cornerstone Land Consultants, representing the applicant, which is Cunningham Machine. They're located at 35 Hunt Road. We're before you this evening to, I guess, get the official approval through a minor site plan. After our original review with you folks back on April 11th of last year. We came before you with this project to do a 3,500 square foot expansion to the existing machine shop that Mr. Cunningham owns. The structure itself would be around 70 feet by 50 feet in width. You can see by the color rendering that I have up there, the proposed structure is the lighter color. And the existing structure is the darker color. We spent a good amount of time today and yesterday reviewing a couple of letters we received by Christina. When we originally came before this board back in April, the request for us was so that we could do a minor and limit the amount of requirements we needed for filings. And you folks graciously allowed us to do so. Ms. Papadopoulos had asked us to provide some additional drainage items. I was hoping to get those completed by the rest of the day today, but we went ahead and made the revisions to the plan. I do have some additional drainage information I do have to provide, Christina. And I was hoping that we could do that at a later date, after we receive approval for the project to move forward, if that's something that's amenable to the board this evening. Some of the requests by Christina was to just upgrade the drainage, more than we had originally proposed. As you can see on the plan, that is now electronically shown. The bioretention cell that would be collecting the new runoff from the pavement and the additional structure was approximately 500 square feet in size. After review with Christina, we increased that to around 750 square feet for a bioretention cell. And we also added rooftop recharge to the project. Those items, you can see, are shown in the light blue area here. And the recharge on either side of the structure. The actual project itself only increases the impervious area on the property by 461 square feet. So we sized the recharge facilities to handle that 461 square foot increase in impervious area. Requires us to have about 300 cubic feet of storage for rooftop recharge. We've provided 320 cubic feet. The bioretention cell was requested by Christina to add some, I guess, initial cleaning of stormwater that might run into it. So we added some grass filter strips, about 75 feet, to the east and west of the bioretention cell to collect that runoff from the, from the parking area, and then enter into the bioretention cell. The recharge areas will be two feet above the seasonal high water table. We did do a couple of test pits out on the property, I believe it was in May of last year. Was it in May?
Fall of May, somewhere.
Yeah, May of last year. And the water table was around four feet below existing grade. The whole site itself is really just a makeup of fill material that was probably brought in when they did 495. So there might be an additional test pit that I think Christina and I might have to do on the opposite side of the structure, just to make sure that the recharge facility going in over there is, in fact, two feet above the water table. But other than that, the only other items that I would be requesting out of the board this evening, we have a couple of waivers. The most important waiver would be the reduction in parking. I believe that when we came in in the existing conditions facility, the parking had around 23, 23 parking spaces. And we're looking to reduce that to 20 spaces this evening. Mr. Cunningham's been in business for quite a long time. They don't get a lot of public access to that structure. He does a lot of machining for defense contracts, that type of thing. So most of his day-to-day activity is just employee parking, maybe one or two salespeople a week. So we're hoping to get that waiver allowed. We did show on the plan areas where that future parking could be expanded, should we need it in the future, or should by chance Mr. Cunningham have to sell this particular building to a different entity that would require that parking. So our hope is to move forward with the minor site plan approval this evening. And then, you know, clear up any items with the drainage with Christina prior to requesting the building permit applications. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Let's see, just a quick one. You said you, you had reserve area...
Correct.
For the parking, so you could, we could simply land bank it?
That is correct. So we have seven spaces here, seven here.
Which is more than adequate.
Yep, three here, and then another six in the rear, if needed.
All right, that makes sense. Okay, comments for anybody? Nancy, you wanna start? Start at that end of the table?
I'd like to see the rest of the elevations and such, since I can't see them here.
I got them. I got them for you.
Sorry, but you're gonna have to get, well, our package is electronic, and right now they're not linked, so we can't see them.
How do you bring the internet back up?
I'm on a site, I can't open a link.
On the internet, but if you wanted to go back to the...
Yeah, I can't open the links.
Right, okay. Then you refresh it, right?
Charlie, do they still, do they still submit the plans in paper form?
Yeah, there should be some in the file.
No, but do they still, remember, it used to be 14 plans to submit? Do they still have to submit the same amount? Or it's all electronic now?
It's all, well, no, they still submit paper, not as many.
Not as many, okay.
So which is the front?
This would be the existing facility.
This is what I have for it. And the new one's a little higher.
Yep, a little taller. So when Mr. Cunningham, because of the newer machines, they're much larger than the older machines were with the CNC machinery. And the problem is, is he had to cut into the roof in several locations where his machines are, so that they could actually fit them in the structure. So this time around, he's trying to make sure he doesn't make that mistake again. So he added a little extra height onto this structure. I believe it's only three and a half feet above the existing one.
You're still in a hole, you're below 490, below the road and everything.
Below grade, yeah.
Not at all.
Gives it a nice detail, too.
It does, it breaks it up a little bit.
Yeah, it breaks it up. Lighting?
We did not propose any lighting, so in the package, there were a couple of waiver requests under Chapter 195, 104, Section E, which allows us to request to not have a lighting plan, a landscape plan, if possible. I mean, we did show some landscaping within that bioretention cell. Most of the site is already loomed and seeded with just grass. There is some stone and large boulders out there. But again, Mr. Cunningham, he's been there for quite a long time. And we were hoping to just develop the structure and focus a lot of the financial ability for the structure.
What, what is the current landscaping between Hunt Road and this building?
There's a significant slope between there, so it's wooded currently.
It's wooded on top of that slope?
Yes, ma'am.
And it will stay wooded on top of it?
We are not disturbing it at all.
Not, not changing it?
Not at all. Matter of fact, the area where the bioretention cell is going in is, we're actually taking out pavement in that area to create room for that bioretention cell. So I don't actually think we have to take down any trees at all.
Okay.
Good.
I am concerned about no lighting. Simply in terms of employee's safety, this being far enough north that by the time you get out at night, it's dark.
You're gonna have to have, you have to have per code.
What?
You gotta have lighting per code.
Well, he's saying, asking for a waiver on it.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's wall packs, I believe, on the existing structure.
You can't waive the state building code, I don't care what you do.
That's my point. That's exactly my point.
He's wavering the plan, but you'll have to do a...
As in, no, you can't waive it.
You'll have to do...
No, no, no.
My, my only comments, I mean, there's hardly any cars in that parking lot. I go by there all the time. I'm really not concerned about the...
Are you doing the lighting?
Sure, see, they have wall packs on the structure, and it's, it's now...
Are you going to have them?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Okay.
The only thing about...
That's what needs to be shown.
This is that existing foundation for the previous building. So remember, originally, this was approved for an 8,000 square foot structure back in 1980. He only built that one portion, which is why we were hoping to do this under the minor site plan. And then, this is the backside of the structure, and you can see he's got lighting above the doors as well.
All right, does your architectural plan show lighting?
That's not us, though.
Yeah, that's fire department.
But it is something that I could work out with Colleen and add to the plan, absolutely.
Yeah.
It ain't that expensive, but the plant goes in low.
I mean, your parking's close enough to the building that, that down, downlighting on the building suffices.
Yeah, I think the wall packs would work. I mean, I've actually been out there recently, 'cause it gets dark at 4 o'clock, and they are on, and it gives plenty of light.
We also need the, the temperature value of those lights listed on the...
Okay, no problem.
And I will refer off to Henry in terms of what the temperature requirements are.
The town's been asking for 4,000K.
Yeah, or less.
Or less. And I know it got taken care of at the auto body shop this next year, but for a while there, they had a light that was really bright.
I remember that.
And, you know, what, you know, the law is, well, what we try to do in town is keep your light on your land.
Yep.
And I don't think you need post lights or anything, a couple of wall packs are fine on there, but...
But you have to have lighting.
They've been good neighbors. I really don't have many issues with this.
I have no issues with it either.
I'm also with it.
I don't really get any, any issues with it. Are you, are you utilizing the existing foundation? That's all gonna go, I was gonna say, 'cause that's gonna be pretty well deteriorated.
My understanding is that whole, that whole foundation will be removed. The pavement will actually be regrinded up, then the existing pavement will be, you know, replaced. Cut out where we need to cut it out, and then, you know, a new facility will come up.
That'd be a block building going up, or is it...
That is correct, yes.
It's gonna be a block, okay. No, I'm good with that, it's, it's fine.
I just have one question about the parking. You're reducing the parking, are you increasing the number of employees?
We are, as a matter of fact. I believe he's adding eight employees, currently has eight employees.
And how many parking, how many employees do they have right now, and how many parking spots?
He has eight. Right now, he has 33 spaces currently. And he's reducing it down to 20, and he'll have only a total of 16 spaces. I mean, 16 employees for the 20 spaces.
Fair enough.
Real, no real questions. Obviously recognize it's a single-use building, so you're all in total control of it. I do have a question for Christina. Christina, absentee plan as a waiver, right, for the drainage, you're comfortable with what you all discussed?
Absolutely, I believe that we will come to a decision on, on a solution.
I'm good, thank you.
All right, looks like we've been around. Anybody want to move to grab?
I think we need to get the updated drawings.
I don't know that we have, do we have any letters for this? This is a minor.
We do.
Oh, okay, fire away.
From the police department, no comments. Board of Health, see the attached letter. Planet Board Members, Cunningham Machine Company, Inc., located at 35 Hunt Road. Currently has a four-yard dumpster on the property without a Board of Health permit. This property is not in compliance with the Town of Chemsford General Provisions, Chapter 201, Board of Health, Article 4, Commercial Refuse Dumpster Collection License into and Operation Regulation. Cunningham Machine Company, Inc., will need to come into compliance with this regulation by submitting a requirement application, fees, and supporting documents to the Board of Health. The Board of Health requests that the granting of any special permits be contingent upon Cunningham Machine Company, Inc., coming into compliance with this regulation. What's that?
She attached the regulation, don't we?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think we need to read the regulations.
No. And this one would be from Christina Papadopoulos. Dear Members, this office has reviewed the site plans by Cornerstone Land Consultants, consisting of one sheet dated November 9, 2018, and a bound project report dated November 9, 2018. As a result of this review, this office has the following comments. At this time, the stormwater design does not meet the office's requirements. This office is working with the applicant engineer to come up with an appropriate solution. This department shall be notified when work on site is to commence in order to arrange for inspections. Three, any revision to the drainage system shall be submitted and approved by this office. Four, the stormwater operation and maintenance plan shall be followed as described in the report. Copies of any inspections or other reports done in accordance with the plan shall be forwarded to the engineering office. Five, as a site built, shall be provided upon completion of work on site. As built, to include a letter from the engineer stating that all stormwater devices have been built to satisfy mass stormwater standards. Provide all supporting documents and calculations. The as-built shall be for a ground survey and submitted in AutoCAD and paper form. Six, the confirmatory testing shall be performed in the area of infiltration per stormwater management guidelines. Testing shall be witnessed by the Chemsford DPW Engineering Division. All unsuitable materials, if any, discovered in the excavation for the infiltration system shall be removed and disposed of in accordance with state and local regulations. Seven, proposed sewer work will require permitting and applicable fees by the DPW Sewer Division for connection to the municipal sewer system. Eight, trench permits shall be filed as necessary per 520 CMR 14, Chapter 82A. Nine, the design engineers receive design and draft and review comments from this office. If you have any questions, please contact this office. Christina Papadopoulos. And then one last letter from Fire Prevention. Dear Members of the Board, water supply and hydrants are not indicated on this plan. Required pressure and flow shall be confirmed by a current water flow test performed approximately to the site, with all calculations submitted to this department for review and approval. The Chemsford Fire Department requires a hydrant within 60 feet of any fire department connection, and a hydrant within 500 feet for manual firefighting operations. Hydrants and fire protection equipment shall be free from landscape and obstructions. Access for firefighting apparatus and emergency vehicles shown on this plan is not shown. All fire lanes shall be marked with approved payment markings and/or approved signage. Fire access roads and turnarounds shall be designed with sweat path analysis using a template based on CFD ladder 1 or AASHTO BUS-45 turn-in template. Fire apparatus shall be designed by a registered engineer to withstand the weight of fire apparatus. The applicant shall design fire apparatus access to comply with 527 CMR 1, Chapter 18. Snow storage shall not obstruct or impede fire access roads or turnaround. All exits shall have sidewalks to allow a continuous path from the exit that lead to a public way. A proposed dumpster location is not shown on this plan. The Fire Prevention Office attempted to contact Kenneth Lanier of Cornerstone Land Consultants on January 2, 2019, in an attempt to address the site plan concern, and left a voicemail. To date, the Fire Prevention Office has not received the call back. Based on a preliminary review of architectural rendering submitted, this building appears to be subject to Mass. Journal Law, Chapter 148, Section 26G, and will require automatic sprinkler protection. Final determination of the applicability of Mass. Journal Law, Chapter 148, Section 26G will be made at the time of building permit submission. This project shall require a fire alarm system to be installed. Based on the lack of apparatus access on the submitted site plan and lack of water supply data, the Fire Prevention Office cannot approve this land, plan as submitted. And I ask the board to make this letter part of the record for this project. Respectfully submitted, Daniel J. Katsupis, Captain, Chemsford Fire.
Okay. All right. So, I guess, the question is, what is the status, particularly on the fire? That seems to be the most.
Well, my understanding was, and I would assume for financial reasons, the applicant was hoping not to sprinkle the structure. As far as the fire access, I didn't think that I would need to submit auto-turn rendition of the structure to prove that they could gain access. I would have assumed that was done previously, as we're just adding structure where there was already previously a foundation. But I can address the fire departments, and sadly, I did not receive that message on January 2, so I apologize.
Okay. Well, that makes some sense.
I always thought it was a building 7,500 feet or more...
Correct.
Needed to be sprinkled.
Correct. And we're 7,499.
It's not worth the board's energy to discuss it. Not your purview. Does so, I mean, I've mentioned this to the Fire Prevention Department in the past. They don't necessarily need to include that in the planning board letter. I think they do it for the benefit of the applicant, as a heads up moving forward.
So I, I think it would be not unreasonable for us to approve subject to letters, subject to the letters.
I could get a motion for it if you want.
I, I'm not really seeing it in that we don't have, we don't have all the drawings. I don't have in front of me what waivers they're asking for. So I really don't want to be approving waivers that I don't really comprehend. I, I would be much more comfortable here if we continued this for two weeks, until they update the drawings to address the issues that have been identified. And we have full, a full drawing package.
I agree, we'd make everybody else do it, with the turnarounds and everything else.
This is a, this is a minor application.
I'm not into approving things I don't have in front of me.
Yeah, and that's not your fault.
It's not your fault.
Right. It kinda goes hand in hand with the computer stuff, instead of having a paper version in front of us, 'cause the computer can break.
No, it usually works, usually works pretty well.
Well, it does usually work, but it didn't work tonight, so...
But aren't we saying that they're gonna have to comply with the fire department's letter anyways, so...
Yes, and we need to see drawings with the lights. And, I mean, there's, there's a number of things that were identified here tonight.
The lights, though, have to be per code anyways, right?
Correct.
And so, and we're saying that the letter is gonna be, you know, part of our decision, so...
Yeah, but lighting is part of what we approve.
And in the application, we did request the waivers. They are in paper form, both the parking...
I read them, I read them on my phone when I got here earlier.
Yeah.
It just, this thing wouldn't work. I pulled it up on my phone, and I, it's, there's like six waivers that they're looking for.
That is correct.
There's seven waivers that they're looking for.
E...
1 through 5, I think, or something like that. Is the two weeks gonna put you off? I mean, if you had to, or...
I mean, it's not gonna put me off, but might put the client off.
Are they trying to get, get the site work done before the ground tightens up?
I think what they're hoping to do is get the foundation in prior to the frost setting in.
Two weeks will put them, put them out of business till spring.
Luckily, we've been having some nice weather, we've had an opportunity to...
You're right there, if you don't, if they're planning on doing it now, if they don't do it now, they're not doing it. You have a business, been there, been in business 40 years. I mean, the, the plan, the foundation was already there for the building, so it's not like they're taking up more space.
They're not clearing a lot or anything.
Any other opinions from the board on this? I have to say, I think under the circumstances, I don't think that, that waiting is gonna benefit us very much. I think we're gonna get exactly the same result, whether we wait or act immediately. Whichever way the board wishes to go, I'm...
I'll give you a motion to approve a contingent upon the, the fire department's...
The lighting.
Lighting and the fire department and...
And the engineer.
And...
Engineering.
The engineers.
And the engineering final approval.
I'd second that.
That's a lot of, that's a lot of contingency, but...
But that'll set them in motion to be able to... They have to do their, their end. Start of doing their stuff.
Well, it helps us get financing, too.
Yeah, there's always that. Okay, so I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion?
Seconded, I'm sorry.
Huh? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six. One, okay. You've got it, but you know, do.
Abstain.
And, okay, one abstention. Yeah, try to get, particularly get over to the fire department and see what they're up to.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And don't forget to get your dumpster permit.
Yes.
He asked, he's going to have to get all that for the building permit, right?
Yeah, he's not going to get occupancy for any of this.
So, Mike, you get to leave.
Yes, I do. The next item up is eighty-eight High Street, and I'm looking at a fair piece of my neighborhood out in front of me, so I think I will recuse, let the record show that.
I will take over.
You've got it.
All right. Well, while the applicant's getting set up, this is about eighty-eight High Street. Joe, and I'm going to murder the lesson. Tedesco is seeking a special permit under one ninety-five dash eleven accessory structure to construct a twenty-six by thirty-six garage addition that is over nine hundred square feet and any other relief necessary. Before you start, do we have any letters? I tried to do it a little differently.
No, Colleen, the only thing you said was reading what he just read.
Oh, there's letters in it. These are new hearings, so there's a letter.
There's a letter.
He should be the next file.
You already read the legal notice.
Legal notice, yeah.
Police, no comments. Border Health, no comments. Fire Prevention, no comments. Engineering, no comments.
You got a lot of lucky.
Use a little bit of that to make up for the lack of experience.
We're all ears.
All right, well, thanks for hearing me this evening. I appreciate it. I don't know if we, I don't have this, oh, fantastic. Okay. I have some photographs. I don't think there's the, I don't have that type of technology or anything, but I have a couple of copies.
Sure, whatever you've got, bring them up.
You can look at them. I can't open this either.
From the top to the bottom.
All right.
I tried to put them in order.
I'll let you guys look over my shoulder.
We'll share. You can get one in some kind of order so it's easy to follow.
I got the gist, yeah.
Off the road, are they? Three hundred feet off the road.
Is this already built?
Uh, no, it is not.
I got no problem with that.
It's passed out.
It's got poles up.
I haven't seen it.
He showed it in.
He's on this driveway.
He's showing the length of the driveway.
Yeah, it's. All five of the houses, three hundred feet away.
Yeah, this is going to long driveway set way back. Nancy, you want to see these?
Yeah.
I think it's that existing garage.
The driveway is.
What is, are going to be.
That's not.
Four, like one eighty or something.
Worried about lot plans. Not worried about the sign up, I'm just worried about lot plans. We can't.
Do you want to see this?
She's not ours to wave.
Thanks.
It's going to go right there.
Someone fencing, maybe he's going to, Tedesco's fencing. Fencing.
Okay, so I want to see this block for him.
Did you pull it up?
Pictures are great.
Why can't you pull it up on there?
No, I took pictures today.
All right, well, we got, we got your, yeah. You have a plot plan there showing exactly where this is going to be drawn in?
Yes.
Bring a pen, show us, and go from there.
I don't want to touch that. This is the existing garage that you probably see.
It's in the picture, yeah.
The dotted line or the dotted area here presents where the addition is going to be and the two buildings will be blended together. That is exactly where that is. I took some photographs that I can walk you through if you like from the different angles so that you would understand whatever the impact may or may not be on the area.
How many car garages?
Uh, three.
Three. What else is going in this garage?
What's going inside the garage?
I mean, wait a minute, that looks like five.
This is the existing structure.
Five total.
Yes, exactly.
So, it would be five total?
See, I guess I have it in my head that it's an addition, and you folks are looking at it as one big building, so I apologize. So, it'll look like, am I blocking?
Nope, you're good.
So, it'll be a five of this existing two, and then it's adding these three and blending the two together. So, yes, it is a five car garage, three added on to the existing two.
What's going on upstairs?
That's just going to be storage space. I have the antiques and things like that and everything. I have no place to work on them, so that's what's happening upstairs.
So, that will be unfinished upstairs?
Uh, no, no, it's going to be raw. I mean, I don't have any, it's just storage, so I'm not going to sheet rock it.
All right, so it's, okay, yeah.
Yes, I don't even know if I'm using the right term, but it won't be sheet rocked anymore.
Is this for the storage of like antique cars or something, or?
Well, I have my car, my wife's car, a daughter that just started driving, a son that's going to drive in six months.
Okay.
I got that going for me.
And one for all the junk.
Yes, exactly. Right now, if you were to look here, you'd say I have a bunch of stuff that I just couldn't fit in. I moved across town, I've lived Chelmsford for, I think, a total of thirty-four, thirty-five years. The last eleven have been here, included in that. When I moved from across town, I lost about a thousand square feet of storage. So, in addition to the four cars for the family members, I also have a couple of two older cars and everything like that that I'd like to have someplace to do it, and I'm getting a little bit too old to do oil changes and things like that and maintenance on my back as it stands now.
Are you putting a pit in here?
No, 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 no pits. I mean, it's either me laying down in the driveway with all kinds of things all over the place trying to get to the drain plug or working in the garage, and I'm getting a little too old for that. And, you know, the different items I have to hold the cars together or toolboxes and things like that. In case the fear is, you know, the proposed use, I have a business that's located in Randolph, Massachusetts, with fourteen souls and seven five hundred square feet. There's no way I could pay for this house with whatever I can do in this garage, so this is not a business use or anything like that, just accessory to the house. Some other reasons as far as getting stuff inside, aside from the clutter that is, you know, now appearing over here that I just couldn't fit in the garage or anything like that, is this driveway because of the shade of the, are you all familiar somewhat with that lot in the photographs and stuff? Because it's so shaded, the driveway doesn't really melt off or anything like that. The choice is I had to cut all the trees down and let it melt, which is kind of ruining the whole area and the whole, I don't know, isolation that I kind of get back there and everything like that, or, you know, if I can have them drive out of the garage, don't have any slipping and sliding. That's why I have the car in the mother-in-law's garage so that my wife can drive in and out without slipping and sliding. The second thing is with all the trees and stuff, the paint and everything like that gets destroyed, and so I already had to have the paint redone in one vehicle because the leaves just sit on it, and, you know, those are two of the big reasons and stuff why it'd be good to get it inside and everything, too, and to get all the clutter back in the I have other things, but if you just want to do a question and answer, I can just answer your questions as it's.
There you go.
I can walk you through the different photographs if you'd like.
I'm good with it. I think it's kind of cut and dry.
It's less non-conforming than the existing structure. So, it's basically an addition to a non-conforming structure that is, that continues a non-conformance that is less non-conforming than the original non-conformance.
As long as you understand it.
I understand that. I do understand that.
This is a good picture, so it comes, it's back five feet further than the existing one, and then it kind of goes back a little bit further. The alternative is to build something here.
That's your lot line?
Not that, but the internet was.
That's, your lot line curls around there?
Uh, yes. Well, to be honest, see this? This is my property. This is my own private driveway. So, basically, the lot line is here.
Your lot line's way over there.
Yeah, the first picture in black and white kind of shows it a little bit better.
Okay.
Okay, so this is Mr. Flaherty's survey. So, this is.
That's your lot line.
Pig private driveway. So, this is five feet further back than the initial building was, so it's actually.
It doesn't make any difference.
No, it doesn't make any difference.
Doesn't make any difference, so we're fine.
Not a problem.
Is this, is this a public hearing?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
So, the other alternatives as far as where else to put it goes, just as far as, you know, the hardship involved, if I put it here, I have to build a road all the way from here in. That's a fortune that I just, I just don't have the money for back here, and I'd have to do so much tree clearing that now you'd have her over here, the gentleman here, and this, there would actually be closer and all the trees would be clear, so there'd be actually less privacy if I put it there. If I was to place it alongside here, on this side of the property, it wouldn't be this setback, it would be even closer to another neighbor's house and everything like that, and it would look absolutely awful right there. This is kind of the best spot. This garage kind of hides most of it. I'm sorry, other questions?
Is that your closest of butter that you just mentioned down there?
Uh, yes, yeah.
No, no, no. Where eighty-six is, the board should know where at least where I'm located, thank you.
Okay, well, are you eighty-six, Brian?
No, I'm ninety, I'm in front of you.
Okay, so this is my.
Before we hear any more from the audience, you will have a chance to speak. We try not to take and have people come back and forth. We're in a public hearing.
So, this is, this is a garage. This is my closest of butter right here, and as you can see, that garage is actually closer to the property line than my own, but that was built quite a while ago. The house that she lives in, that Judy lives in, is back here. So, this is, yeah, that's perfect. So, this is where she is, this is the garage that was put out front, this has been, this, this, and this have been here for quite a long time from what I can gather. So, that's why this is so close to the property line, because at that time, I think this was all one property, so that's why. So, my closest of butter is a garage. My second closest is right here. As far as closest to the garage goes, if that makes sense. The property for me goes all the way up to here and stuff, but the garage is here, not there.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions? Now, anybody from the public want to get up and make any comments would be, this is the time.
You still got to talk into the mic because it's being televised.
I can talk loud enough, so they'll hear. Don't worry about that. I'm Charlie Cashin, I'm the butter. Right, where are we here? This is my house right here.
What's your address there, I'm sorry?
Eighty-six High Street. Again, for the record, Charles Cashin. I've owned the property since the early nineties. I grew up at eighty-four High Street. Since the sixties, my family's been here, and since the late eighteen hundreds. Moved from Lowell to there in the early thirties, so that's my interest in it. Appreciate making this a public hearing so we have an opportunity to discuss Tedesco's proposal. Three concerns primarily that we have, and we'll start small and work out a little bit. First and foremost, I don't know about foremost, but first is personal and what the potential is on my viewscape. The majority of my view for my house would be right on to this new construction. In addition to both porches I have, look principally on to that, and so that's my personal concern. I'm concerned also with the potential for diminished property value, not only for myself but for our neighbors, and I'm not sure that would come into being or not. I think it depends on how it is actually constructed, if approved, and executed. But I do know, non-conforming, as we've talked about, has the potential to have that type of impact. And then finally, more, most broadly, is High Street is a scenic road in Chelmsford, and this is part of that. While the setback is significant, it would certainly be viewed not just from my property but from the street as well, and how that has the potential to diminish not only property values for us there but values within the town writ large. I'm not sure these are unable to be overcome. You know, looking at the design itself, I'm not sure I'm opposed to it. If it comes to fruition, some of the things Mr. Tedesco has mentioned, that the intent is for personal use, because that was one of the questions that I had, was that there is no commercial intent. We've seen other places, other residential sections in town that have transitioned from residential to commercial, I believe unintentionally, progressing over time, and I don't want High Street to become that. While I have not lived here for the better part of almost four decades while I've been in service to our country, I do plan on coming back here, and I want to come back to a place that myself, my family, my children will enjoy being, and the lot we live on is a very big part of that, as well as our neighborhood that I remember from growing up. So, some of the things that I personally think would help alleviate some of my concerns have already been mentioned, and I appreciate that, that the intent is to be for private use, not something that would expand into commercial use. And I don't know if there's a way that we document that for the record or covenant or whatever the right term is, but to put.
The local building department would definitely shut down anything commercial out there.
We usually make that a part of our decision anyhow, that it can't be used for commercial purposes.
And this is my ignorance of, is parking of commercial vehicles, even though not conducting a business there, does that become, that's what I don't know. Mr. Degasso's indicated that doesn't, at least what I heard, didn't seem to be his intent, but I don't know how we memorialize that.
We can put something apparently on there, but we do have, we do have a bylaw that covers some of that. You're allowed to bring, it's not like if you bring a car home with letters on it, you're allowed. You know, you can do like a pickup truck or a small truck, and then you get troubled. There's a whole, there is a list in our bylaw, you can't bring home.
Several.
No.
Yeah, and it's not typically something that would be part of this decision. It's simply an enforceable requirement across town for the zoning. So, if you had an issue with, for instance, very large trucks being parked there, you would simply call the building inspector and they would deal with it.
Okay, very large or multiple smaller, I presume.
We had, we had something in the Westlands, was it like this, not that long ago, we went through the whole thing and.
But it's enforced by the building inspector. It's not addressed within an application like this unless they were applying for a commercial use. And if they were applying for a commercial use, then we would address it as part of that use permit.
So, that helps to address my longer-term concerns. So, my immediate concerns is what do we do with the diminished value now that the viewscape out of the house is significantly altered? And I'm not sure, I looked through your designs, but I can't recall some of the things that were in there, or if they were, if it was just conversations between you and some of the other folks there about landscaping or wall, retaining walls around that might help mitigate what right now is a very dramatic impact. I say it is, simply because we've already.
Please address your questions to the board. We'll, we try not to get between two neighbors.
Got it. Okay, so for the board, my concern is what my view is going to be and what can we do, what can you do to help reduce any diminish to my values and my view? Because while it is hard to see, the proximity of my house to this potential construction is much closer than it appears, at least to me, right here.
Do you know what the distance would be, though, between your porch, the porch that you mentioned and the garage?
I could provide, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
Eighty feet, maybe, ninety feet.
I was going to say three times the distance to you and me.
Suffice it to say, more than, more than twice what the side yard said back is, which means that it's outside of any, any special considerations.
If that's the door.
And outside special considerations that were developed for conforming construction.
This is, this is conforming, again, that it is, it is a lesser non-conformance expansion to a previously existing non-conforming structure.
You folks know this better than I do, but lesser non-conforming to me sounds like non-conforming.
It's pre-existing, it's permitted.
I just know some.
Nancy.
Go ahead.
Why don't we take and try to get this all.
Go ahead.
All down and have one person taking, handling it.
I'll shut up.
Henry, I got a quick question. Does the front of your house face the garage, or is that the back of your house?
No, that's the front.
That's the front door, your front door is right there.
That's the living room, that's the sitting room or bedroom, depending on how you use it, the kitchen and both porches.
Basically, probably the best way to handle this is for the two of you just to talk and get some pitches and get a rough idea. I don't know if there's a lot we can do for you because you don't, you really don't have a right to the view over somebody else's land. The best thing to happen is have two neighbors get together and talk about it. I know he's got a beautiful house there. I'm hoping he's going to put a beautiful addition on it, hoping that, you know, he can give you some details of the siding and give you a rough, a better idea of what he's going to build. You know, it's not like he's encroaching on your setbacks for your property line. You know, it's not like he's encroaching on your setbacks for your property line. When Nancy was making her comments before, she was thinking that the driveway was the property line, and it's not the property line.
It's not the property line.
Right.
So, the comments that she made about it being existing, not, no.
It's not.
It's not.
I'm not even sure it's nonconforming.
What is not? I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Question for the applicant. How many feet is this new structure from your property line?
This new structure from the property line, what do you mean? Oh, do you have Mr. Flaherty's version? I believe this is like forty-five feet.
So, you meet the side yard.
From there to there.
Yeah, so it's conforming.
It's conforming.
It's conforming.
It's conforming.
No. What? This is a way. It's not, it's-
It's not the property line?
No.
What's in front of you has nothing to do with setback. What's in front of, what's in front of you is that it's an accessory structure, more than nine hundred square feet.
Yeah. So, the setback isn't even an issue that we should be talking about?
No. If, if the building inspector determines that it needs further zoning relief for setbacks, then they'll send them to the zoning board.
Yeah.
That's right.
What's in front of you tonight is purely not over nine hundred square feet.
Just for the square footage, though.
Yeah.
Well, that makes it easy.
So, just the square footage. But again, I apologize for not understanding. Does it conform, or does it not?
It conforms, for our local law. Because nine hundred, well, it conforms, but it's larger than what a typical garage is. So, they're looking for relief on that aspect. What, it's forty-three feet. What we were talking about before, it, as far as being of setbacks and off property lines, it has no, it doesn't, no bearing on us, and we have nothing to do with that. So, the question is, that's in front of us, is, is this person allowed to put a large garage on his property? Now, there would be nothing that we can say if he decided to break it up and put a bunch of small buildings on there either. You know, if he wanted to put, you know, five one-car garages around the property, he's got almost a large enough property to do it. We're just trying, we're trying to make the best profit. I hope the two of you could get together and talk about it a little bit.
And I'm not asking for you not to approve it necessarily, but I think I'm becoming confused over the process, and so maybe it's my lack of understanding. I have heard, I think, on the record, that this is nonconforming.
There's a bylaw.
Did I not hear, so the record is incorrect?
It was my confusion. I initially believed that the property line was on the other side of his driveway.
Okay.
There's a bylaw that states anything over five hundred square feet needs to come in the site plan review. And I believe that's, it's nine hundred square feet, so that's why it's here. It's just for a review of the site plan.
So, not that it exceeds any specific requirement, but just that the standards are over this, shall be considered?
Correct. Correct.
It seems like your view would improve right away, because he's talking about the stuff that's outside of the garage would actually be inside of the garage. But even better, what do you have plans for, do you have pitches or plan for what-
I have some ideas-
-to show him, so that he can see?
Talking about, and I can actually, they're all in front of you. I can show you.
So, yeah, I mean, it's-
I don't know if that's even an issue for us right now. We need to get things done. We can turn this back to you, you're two neighbors. You go out in the hallway and talk about it. There will be other, other steps that has to go along with this. They have to get a building permit. They have to take, you know, if there is, the building inspector says, we got issues, it's gonna go with the front of the ZBA.
But nothing outside the purview of the town?
Nothing outside the purview of the town. All right? So, anybody else from the audience have comments? Thank you.
Going once? Going twice? Three times?
I'll give you a motion to approve the special-
Can we close?
Motion to close a public hearing, sorry.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the special permit under one ninety-five dash eleven.
For over-
I'll say about it.
Over, for nine hundred square foot building?
Nine hundred square foot building.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Talk with your neighbors.
Good thing, because I had a half hour clock, uh, to show.
It's just, it's out of our purview, so it's like, you know-
Been canceled.
Yeah.
I have a question and answer, but you don't wanna go.
Yeah. It's gorgeous. And so far back, if nobody can see it.
We're right at the end.
On schedule, instead of, instead of opening this in. That guy will go down.
At least, at least right here.
He said, that's fine, that's not fire access. It would've been a nice fire access.
All right.
I'll bring up the next one if the chair isn't gonna come back.
Nice out there.
He left. He found a brook up.
Colleen? Seven fifteen, he came back.
Oh, thank you.
He's back. Okay. Thank you. Thanks a lot. Did a good job. Yeah. He did, always does. Okay, the next thing up, also for a public hearing, is fifty-three Parkhurst Road, Beaumark LLC, for demolition of existing structure, and construction of two commercial buildings totaling twenty thousand two hundred seventy-five square feet. New parking spaces and associated site improvements. Boy, this, it's in a CB, consisting of two point one acres. And he's requesting approval under the B A O D, and the C O I D, and associated permits. Now, let me be clear this. Is this, is this the C O I D B A O D hearing, or we're already through that?
This is just a C O I D hearing.
This is just a C O I D hearing, so we're not granting any permits tonight?
No, you are.
We are?
Yep.
Oh, okay, this is the hearing, this is not the, this is not the-
We did the applicability.
We did the applicability. Okay, good.
This is the, this is the do or die.
Ah, yeah, I remember this one. You're up.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record. My name is Brian Malisi, with Whitman and Bingham Associates, representing Beaumark LLC, who is the property owner of fifty-three Parkhurst Road. Tonight is Rich McLean of Allied Paving, which is the company that currently is operating out of fifty-three Parkhurst Road. He's gonna be the project manager for the, for the property owner. Very quickly, in the, the agenda was a little bit confusing. It is not two separate buildings. It is one building. However, at the, at the C O I D hearing, we talked about, there's a mezzanine level with office space on it. So, while it's a two-story building, it's a single, it's a single building, not two.
Okay.
And the other thing, I do not think we need a B A O D. It's just a C O I D project. We were in before, a couple of weeks, a couple of meetings ago, received our approval or applicability letter for a SERP-
Yeah.
-which is the Commercial Industrial Replacement Project.
Yeah, it was a C O I D. Strictly a C O I D.
Correct. Yep. And so, what we're here in front of you tonight is for a site plan review, and the special permits that go along with that C O I D.
Okay, gotcha.
Very quickly, because I know there's a new member that maybe not have been here before, I'll run through the project real quick, and then go through some of the special permits that we require. So, the property's located at fifty-three Parkhurst Road, which is the home of Allied Paving. Existing building was built roughly the beginning of the sixties, nineteen sixty-two, I believe, about six thousand square feet old block building, and they are currently running Allied Paving business out there. It is behind the new self-storage facility that was built by Aaron Hall, which is here. It's off Locust, but Parkhurst Road would be over here. GNAV comes in.
I'll pull it up.
The property over here is ten GNAV, which I believe was in front of this board roughly twelve years ago, maybe not quite that long ago, and has the same, similar type of business. Project is to, so this is actually the building pad for the self-storage facility that's now up and operational. Parkhurst Road would be here. This is GNAV. This is the existing ten GNAV. This is the old building that's gonna come down. This, of course, is the dump-
Yeah.
-which is Route Three. So, the Route Three right of way is at the bottom of the page. The dump would be to the right, and Aaron Hall's building would go to the left side. So, we're gonna tear down this building, put up a new building in its place using the C O I D overlay district.
Gotcha.
The building, the proposed use is gonna be contractor base. It's ten separate bays. Each will have a A grade access into the mezzanine level office space at the top of the building, or at the front of the building. The grade drops off, almost like a walkout, if you would. And it'll be A grade and overhead door access to the rear. They envision something like plumbers, electricians, where they can have a small office space to do some of their office duties, and have some storage space to pull in trucks and vehicles and store some of their equipment. If you were to go out there today, Allied Paving is running the business out there. There is a large expanse of paving that's out there now. It's actually, encroaches a little bit onto the Route Three right of way in this location here. We actually have a decrease of a little over half an acre, almost twenty-three thousand square feet of decreased pavement. We'll get to that in a minute when we talk about, the favorite subject was to be storm water. Property is serviced by municipal sewer. Currently, the existing building is not connected to sewer. It's still on a septic system. We propose to connect that into the sewer system via pump station, come up and tie it to the existing sewer, which is located here at ten GNAV. We are gonna connect on to the municipal water system. Building will be sprinkled. It's of sufficient size, and it needs to be sprinkled. We have, again, parking to the front, parking on the other side, a few spots here, and then mostly just access to the bays out the rear. There is an existing cell tower on site, I should point out, that it's kinda hard to see in the overhead photos, but the tower's actually located here. This white block is the existing chain link fence that houses some of the equipment for the tower. So, we do require site plan approval. We also require some special permits. I should point out, because most of the special permits have to do with the fact that this piece of property has zero frontage. It really doesn't have any frontage. It does have an access easement out along the Route Three right of way out to Parkhurst Road. It's a small fifteen-foot wide paved easement. It is, you can pass through it with a vehicle. There is a telephone pole rates an act of in the middle of it, makes it a little tough to get by. However, that will remain for emergency access. This property is owned by Beaumark LLC. Ten to twelve GNAV is owned by Joyce Realty Trust. There's a common owner there, which is Bob Joyce. One of the comments that came out of the C O I D hearing was, this board wanted to make sure that there was going to be adequate access easements and utility easements for the two property owners. And what I have, if it's okay with the chair, I'll pass this out. This is just a draft easement. A lot of some of the particulars have been left out. Obviously, I'm waiting if we receive approval, to make sure that the configuration kinda stays the way we have it proposed. The easement can be finalized. We'll just certainly turn it to staff, and put on record. Thank you. So, to run down the list of special permits, the simple fact that this project is over twenty thousand square feet in your C O I D regulations, the building footprint itself is fifteen thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. With the additional second story mezzanine level office level, it's twenty thousand seven hundred and twenty-five square feet, so we figured out special permit. Parking standards, kind of a tough building to say how much parking we need. What I did was, I calculated the office space, which is very simple. Forty-seven hundred square feet of office would require twenty-four spaces. Contractor space gets a little bit, it doesn't fit into a category real, real, real nice and neat. However, what I used was, the office space, the office space, what did I use? I used five hundred square feet of warehouse, office, manufacturing space. If you use that, we require thirty-two spaces for that use, or fifty-six total spaces. We have fifty spaces. So, we have within that, we have, so we have eighty-nine percent of the required spaces. We asked for the special permit. I'm not sure whether that triggers the special permit, that this board does have the right to reduce the amount of parking, but we almost, we almost meet it. One of the special permits, one ninety-five, one fifteen B, on the reduction of the parking would be the location. We're too close to the property line. This being the property line, we're actually over the property line, so we don't have that ten-foot offset. That'll be taken care of in the cross easements, parking easements, and access easements. However, that requires a special permit. Because we have no real frontage, because we're over this property line, we've also asked for a special permit that we, that we don't have the ten-foot buffer strip along the street frontage. There really isn't any street frontage here. So, it starts to get a little confusing. We wanted to err on the side of caution. We don't wanna get caught later on, and have somebody say, or the building inspector say, well, geez, you should've asked for this waiver. We gotta go back to the board. So, if, if through this discussion, we find out that some of these waivers aren't required, we can take them off from this. However, this is the kind of what we work for. One ninety-five, one fourteen C, minimum frontage. This board has the right to reduce the amount of frontage under C O I D. We don't have any frontage. So, again, we ask for that waiver. Landscaping. The landscaping plan that we included in the package moves some of the existing landscaping in the island that's currently here, and puts it back into the reconfigured island here. We also provided some landscaping along this side. Although, this building will not be seen unless you drive into GNAV and get into the parking lot here. There's Mount Trashmore here that has no view shed to it. I've driven by Route Three a bunch of times, while you can see the new building here, you really can't see this site at all. And from Parkhurst Road, this two-story building certainly masks anything here. So, while we did provide some trees, tried to provide some landscaping to the front of the building, we may not meet the entirety, to the entirety of the percentages required. Take into account the open space on the property, account it all as green space or landscape space, we have plenty. We have over forty percent of open space on the property. Stormwater's gonna be handled. Again, we have a very large decrease in the amount of, the amount of improvement here with the project, so therefore, we have less runoff just from, from that sheer fact. Those are gonna run. Stormwater is projected to just sheet flow into a water quality swell along the edge of the parking lot, where it'll be detained, and then it'll just spill over the edge and get into the wetland system that's located here. We haven't been coloring the boards lately, because Colleen has everything on the monitor, but we were in front of Conservation Commission last night. I guess I'll call it for them. That's where some of these other lines are, some of the buffer zones, and some of the no-touch zones, that are kind of affiliated with the wetland bylaw.
What'd they do?
They continued it because they didn't have a file number. They asked for a couple of amenities. They did ask for a fence, kind of along the edge of that treatment swell. Apparently, they asked Aaron Hall for the same type of fence, more for trash. That was one of the things that I should probably point out, that I did meet with the community yesterday. We went over some of the drainage calculations in the plan, and she had brought up the same, you know, would we clean it or doing any type of, you know, visual or burial or, and called, called us for that. So, the two things, the fence, they wanted to make sure that we're gonna be okay with the drainage review that we went over, and once the file number comes in, so they've continued this. I know I've thrown out a lot of information, I'm not sure whether I throw it at all, but I'll keep going. You must have questions.
Okay. Well, let's see.
Are there any letters or anything?
Don't, no, let's take a look.
Find out. I know there's at least one.
Christine's phone busy.
Legal notice, you already- Board of Health, see the attached letter. Dear members, the Board of Health requests that grant, the granting of any special permits to be contingent upon Beaumark LLC submitting the required application fee and support and documents to the Board of Health in order to be in compliance with the Town of Chelmsford General Provisions, Chapter 201, Board of Health, Article 4, Commercial Refused Dumpster Collection, Licensing and Operation Regulation. The designated location of dumpsters was not noted on the plan submitted. Sue Rosa. And then the regulations are there. That's the Board of Health, see attached. Police, no comments. Department of Public Works. Dear members, this office has reviewed the site plans by Whitman and Bingham Associates, consistent of nine sheets dated October 27, 2018, and a stormwater system analysis dated October 27, 2018. As a result of this review, this office has the following comments. One, modifications off-site need approval for abutment property owners. Two, this department shall be notified when work on-site is to commence in order to arrange for inspections. Three, any revisions to the drainage system shall be submitted and approved by this office. Four, the stormwater operation and maintenance plan shall be followed by, as described in the report, copies of any inspections or other reports done in accordance with the plan shall be forwarded to the engineer and office. Five, the site as built was not provided for the development and modifications done to 10 GNAV. This office requires an as-built of 10 GNAV prior to approval for any work to be done on 53 Parker's Road. Six, a site as built of 53 Parker's Road shall be provided upon completion of the work on-site. As-built to include a letter from the engineer stating that all stormwater devices have been built to satisfy mass stormwater standards. Provide all support and documents and calculations. The as-built shall be from a ground survey and submitted in AutoCAD and paper form. Seven, conformatory testing shall be performed in area of infiltration per stormwater management guidelines. Testing shall be witnessed by the Chelmsford DPW Engineering Division. All unsuitable material, if any, discovered in the excavation or for the infiltration system shall be removed and disposed of in accordance with state and local regulations. Eight, this project requires the MPDES Construction General Permit. The final copy of the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, SWPPP, must be submitted to the town as well as filed with the EPA prior to beginning any site work. Nine, the proposed sewer work will require permitting applicable fees from the DPW Sewer Division for connection to the municipal sewer system. Ten, a road opening permit is required from the Chelmsford DPW Highway Division for work within the GNAV right away. Eleven, trench permits shall be filed as necessary per 520 CMR 14, Chapter 82A. Twelve, the design engineer has received design and draft and review comments from this office. If you have any questions, please contact this office. Christina Papadopoulos. And that is it. Oh, no, sorry, I forgot this one. Thank you. I was looking at it. Fire prevention, Chelmsford Fire Prevention. Dear members of the board, water supply appears to be adequate. The required pressure and flow shall be confirmed by a current water flow test performed proximate to the site, with all calculations submitted to this department for review and approval. Hydrant locations shown on this plan shall be adjusted to comply with the Chelmsford Fire Department standards. The Chelmsford Fire Department requires a hydrant within 60 feet of the fire department connection and a hydrant within 500 feet for manual firefighting operations. Hydrants, fire protection equipment shall be free from landscaping obstructions. Access for firefighting apparatus and emergency vehicles shown on this plan is not currently shown. In speaking with Brian Molesky, the project engineer, he indicated that he will provide a fire apparatus access plan. All fire lanes shall be marked with approved pavement markings and/or approved signage. Fire access roads and turnarounds shall be designed with swept path analysis using the AASHTO BUS-45 turning template. Fire apparatus access shall be designed by a registered engineer to withstand the weight of fire apparatus. Snow storage shall not obstruct or impede fire access roads or turnaround. All exits shall have sidewalks to allow a continuous path from the exit that lead to a public way. The dumpster location is not shown on this plan. An automatic sprinkler system conforming NFPA 13 and a fire alarm system conforming to NFPA 72 shall be required. Both systems shall be monitored by UL-approved Central Station Monitor and Service, and all components and fire protection systems must comply with State Building Code and Chelmsford Fire Department requirements. The applicant is advised that emergency responder radio testing and, if necessary, coverage shall be provided as contained in the building code and Chelmsford Fire Department regulations. Three sets of sprinkle and fire alarm plans, along with support and documentation, must be submitted to Fire Prevention Office for review prior to approval of the building plans. All equipment related to fire safety shall be located at the discretion of the Chelmsford Fire Department. The applicant must submit an application to the Town of Chelmsford E911 Committee for address and unit number through its coordinator, Town Clerk Patricia Desirous. The property is currently not accessible from Parker's Road. This department will require the applicant to apply for an address on GNAV and will require proof, proof of permanent easement to access the proposed building. Pending receipt of an approved apparatus access plan, which includes snow storage and dumpster location, this office would approve of this plan with these conditions and changes. I ask the board to make this letter part of the approval process. Respectfully submitted, Captain Daniel J. Katsoufos. That is it. Very good. All right.
Just the architect, Beaumark has hired the architect. He has the preliminary architectural plans were included as part of this.
Yes.
He has his subs ready to go, the MVP guys and mechanical, electrical plumbing. They wanted to try to get through this stage of the game just to make sure things weren't going to change drastically before they kind of pulled the trigger. So things like the fire, fire protection, the sprinkler system is all ready to go to be designed. As is typical with that.
Gotcha. Okay.
I'll start.
Take it away.
Yeah, I'm, there's a lot of other really nice-looking properties around there. Right now, that's not a very nice-looking property. I think this is going to be an improvement down there. I really don't see a problem with it. We do still need to have a, we're going to need a lighting plan and stuff like that. We need to be buttoned up.
There is a lighting and landscaping plan as of right now. With the reconfiguration of the island, the three existing light poles can remain. We're going to add a fourth one at the end of the island to kind of light up the entrance here. And then with, with the 10 units and five egresses, kind of, well, five bunched together, the building lighting along the back. So that's all we're going to do for lighting is really just add one more pole here to light up that entrance. And that is on the plan.
And it is on the plan. All right. I'm good.
Question and comment. If this were entirely used as office space, how many parking spaces would you need?
I think it's 98, and maybe just a bit over 100. My math is, I need my calculator to do it.
How would you deal with that?
If it were entirely office space?
You can't have it.
On Route 3 and have them busted.
Yeah, I mean, that's the, it's just simply not appropriate. The site isn't appropriate to do that.
It really isn't. I mean, again, with the, with the wetland system, everything was kind of, I won't say jam, but it was very carefully placed to the, to the north side of the lot in order to try to get away from some of the buffer zones. And so 50 spaces is pretty maxed.
Do you have any ability to expand the parking on this site?
No.
Okay.
We may be able to add, you know, maybe a half a dozen spaces up in here and whatnot, but we were trying to find some areas for snow storage, some areas for some green space.
Okay. The comment I have is that because this site plan involves development off the site, I believe by, in accordance with the bylaw, it needs to be submitted in the names of both owners, not just one.
It's one and the same is what you're.
Well, it might be, but, but the point is that this has development activity that is on another site.
For purpose of simplicity, would you, would you, would the board accept a letter of authorization from the other property owner giving authorization for this to be submitted?
I think that's eminently reasonable.
We discussed that during the applicability.
Yeah, we did.
I think that's reasonable, but I think you have to have that.
I apologize if I missed that in my notes, but we can get that.
Yeah, just get it in the record. That'll be fine.
So what happens, this question, they don't own both properties.
No, it's, some of this spills over.
So what happens if someone comes along and wants to sell and develop the other building down the road, and now you're, you have this property is, is implementing what's happening over there.
Presumably, the, the letter of authorization.
No, it's the agreement. That's easement.
Yeah, here's, no, that's a great question. Lifetime of easement going across.
It's a good question. That easement will provide the right to pass and repass, as well as the, to maintain the utilities that are on there as well. And again, it's in draft form. Couple ways to skin that cat. We will be drawing an easement plan. I'm not sure whether the attorney or the property owner wants to provide, you know, meets and bounds description of where to access it, or to kind of give them a blanket easement. We're still kind of talking about that, but that is a draft easement, and that'll be finalized. We would like to see maybe prior to occupancy. But that is a good question.
It's really critical on this particular plan.
Because it would be landlocked. If he were to sell either one or two, and people don't get along, you're right, it would be landlocked, so there will be easements in place.
If I, remember, this is like the one up in Tingsboro, West Tech Drive, that, yeah, I had space up there and never had an issue with parking. I mean, it's.
It's one of those, it's kind of, like I said, it doesn't really fit right tight into it. It's not like it's a retail center. You know, you may have a customer come in looking for a quote or whatever it may be, but really, it's mostly for, you know, the electrician to come and pull his car in and maybe get into a van and leave or whatever it may be.
Well, I think it's a great use of the property, and it will definitely make that lot look better, so I'm okay with it. Over here.
I don't have any questions, just the comments that go after what Henry was talking about earlier. It's a definite improvement for up there. It's, that'll finish that whole side off.
Yeah.
It's definitely needed. That's what the COI is all about. I think it's a great project.
I agree with Don.
No, it's my question.
Done.
What's that white shaded area?
Here?
Yeah.
Cell tower.
There's a cell tower.
Okay, and then what about the, so the dumpster was mentioned. Where would a dumpster?
My bad. I had two locations. I had one over here, and I had one over here. And while we were deciding where to put it, I left them both off the plan.
How do you, how do you do the dumpsters?
Big mountain behind you.
Which just gets embarrassing.
I'm falling under the sword on that one, so. My question was, were we going to put one, were we going to put two, and I showed none. So we have room for the dumpster, and I will add that.
The individual units won't have dumpsters, then. They'll, they'll have access to use those.
They may have to have a recycling bin inside, you know, their overhead doors, but for the most part, there's going to be community dumpsters.
So this site is going to have its own dedicated dumpsters?
Correct.
Okay.
What, what kind of though?
Understood.
Okay.
Obviously, you guys have the experience with 10 GNAV and the dumpster situation there, so I'm sure you've learned some lessons over the years. Having, having a well-thought-out dumpster plan, I think, will, will be, will be beneficial. On the existing easement that I think you described as an emergency access, is your, is the project's proposal to use that as an, as an emergency access?
It was brought up at the COI meeting, and people wanted it to remain. There was never any plans to remove it. It's going to remain, and it is going to be used for emergency access.
So currently, does the fire department use that as emergency access? You mentioned there's a pole in the middle of it.
I do not believe they do, for the simple reason, the best way to access this current property is to come right through GNAV.
So is your, is your client or is the project proposing to, to keep, maintain that emergency access for purposes of emergency access? So if that's the case, and I, I apologize, I wasn't, didn't hear all the fire department memo. Are they requiring you to remove the pole and to repave it so that it's actually accessible?
It wasn't in the memo. Sweep path analysis shows that they can get their equipment in and around.
I get it. So, so the reason I'm asking these questions is that the self-storage facility said they had no need for it, and they said that they were aware that this project was, was pending and going to be moving forward. And I believe they said that they had no need for it, but they were not going to touch it until this project figured out if they needed it or if they wanted it. So now you're saying that you're proposing to keep it, but you don't actually, you're not going to improve it, and it can't be used for fire access because there's a, there's a pole in the middle of it. So wouldn't it make more sense for your project to say, "We're not using it. We're not showing it on our plan. We have no need for it, and between the two parties, we will abandon it, officially abandon it," so that it's no longer shown on plans as, as emergency access? Because you can't use it for emergency access. Even if the fire department wanted to drive down there today, they couldn't use it. So I'm wondering if it's a legal issue for insurance purposes, or just something that you're showing because the town wants, wants to see it?
It's probably a good question. I mean, if the pole were removed, you could use the access. Allied paving before the, before the self-storage unit project was constructed, used the access all the time. Trucks came in, they kicked, they came.
So the pole was put in as part of the self-storage project?
No.
No.
The pole was pre-existing when the.
You just drove around it?
It was a huge parking lot there at that time.
Right. Existing conditions, you can't get a fire truck down there, can you?
Well, they put boulders there, so you can't even get.
Thirty or so years, when Whitney's machine shop was down there, he was a friend of mine, and there was, that was the only access to that machine shop. And that was.
So it made sense back then.
It was a road, trucks used to go in and out of it.
Right.
So how did the pole get in the middle?
I'm just suggesting that based upon what we heard with the self-storage facility.
Next to it, they go around the pole.
Maybe an opportunity, and if there is a true opportunity as part of this project, let's, let's, let's at least on paper officially eliminate it on the plan and in the, in the decision, that the two property owners at their own volition can, can, assuming they have the legal rights to completely eliminate it.
If they can get along.
Right. I'm not suggesting that the planning board of the town get involved in it. My concern was you referred to it as emergency access. I don't believe the fire department is requesting or intends to use it for emergency access. So I don't, my, my, my suggestion is I don't want the decision, even though the plan may reference it as emergency access, I don't think the decision should, should make mention of it. In fact, the decision should probably go so far as the fire department has no purpose or need for it for emergency access.
I think they would like to have.
Because it's not usable.
Right.
If they want, if they wanted, if they wanted to, if they wanted it, if they felt it was important enough, they would have said so in their memo. They had two, two shots at it. So I'm not sure they, I'm not sure they care about it.
Yeah. If the, but, if the people wanted to keep it and it's an easement to their property, they can call the national grid and say, "Your telephone pole's in the middle of my."
Private business.
Private business.
But as soon as you mention it is purposes of emergency access, I think most people think it's for the fire department.
Right, when it's not, because you can't even use it.
So when you, when you refer to emergency access, you're referring to it for your client, that property in the event that they need or want. Okay.
So forgive me if I read my notes wrong, but I thought at the COI meeting, somebody said that they wanted to see the access remain for emergency access. I do not have any notations on my plan.
That was it.
Existing conditions or any other notation saying that that is to be used for emergency access. If that, if that helps, then I'll double check again and take any, any notation off if there is one. However, my client has told me that he would like to see it remain.
I think I might have been the one that mentioned it.
Like I said, I have my notes from before.
So are we all clear with the fire department?
They don't care.
Okay. So this is for personal, I wouldn't refer to it as typical emergency access.
Alternate access.
You're retaining your easement rights.
Yeah, you're maintaining.
And you guys.
I understand that, yes.
Private business. I just, I just, I just don't want the plan or the decision for the town to get wrapped into this thing.
Yep.
If the town wanted to get wrapped into it, we certainly had more than, more than appropriate opportunities.
Plus, you're calling it an emergency access when it, it actually isn't.
Right.
Because you can't use it.
Right. And then the last item was the 53G. I just mentioned it. I'm not suggesting it's, it's applicable in this case. If you recall, it's been applied for when new parking spaces are created at $100 per new parking space. This is somewhat unique in the sense that there's plenty of pavement, they're removing a half acre of pavement, but there may not be dedicated delineated parking spaces. So I think the board needs to.
Isn't there some parking spaces in front of that existing building already?
Roughly, we counted maybe 20. But yeah, there is places for, you know, staff. I don't have the existing conditions, but there is places for staff to park, driving the 10-wheelers or driving the, you know, the low beds and whatnot. Driving the 10-wheelers or driving the, you know, the low beds and whatnot. So, yes.
I would think that the way it's laid out, it's probably awash with what you, what you're proposing and what's there now. So it's.
I mean, certainly a half an acre less of pavement, but by a strict number count, we have about 30 more spaces.
In terms of marked spaces.
Count the cars.
Yeah. Again, there's a couple spaces here, again, the front office is here and there's a couple parked. The rest of this is all known man's land. So.
Very good. Any more thoughts from anybody on the board? Now, we do this, of course, being COI, we do this with basically one, one permit in one fell swoop.
Would you like a motion for that one 12 foot, fell, fell swoop?
Here's a public hearing.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
That's right.
Oh, there is some public out there. Would anybody like to speak to this? Sure. Absolutely sure. Okay.
If you'd like a motion to close the public hearing.
I would love one.
There you go.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll give you a motion to approve the site plan approval. You want all the special permits at once or individually?
No, it, it, it's just.
Has advertised with all the special permits.
Second. All right. And you'll get appropriate notations.
Bring it to you next meeting under administrative review.
Got it. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Seven zip.
Good luck.
Okay.
Start digging.
Congrats, Brian.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Sure. Well, thanks for, thanks for bearing with us. Okay. Now, I understand that the Oftobanav has been pushed out to the 23rd. All right, we will not take that up. I do have a pile of new business. So let me take it from the top and actually one that I think the first thing that we ought to do is I believe we need to select a new vice chair. Is there anybody who would like to volunteer?
Can nominate.
I'd nominate. Anybody else? Motions are closed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. You're on. Thanks. Okay. A couple of more things. I'll quickly report on the Route 40 committee. Which had an interesting little procedural jog to it last night at our meeting because Mike got sworn in that day. That put four members of the planning board on there. So I had to recuse. Otherwise, we'd have had to publicize it as a planning board meeting. So.
You're not officially on it.
Yeah, well, I'm close enough to officially on it. It let me, it let me sit in the front and watch it, which I'm just as glad. But it went well. I would say, well, it, it looks as if we're getting pretty close. We're, we're within a meeting or two of resolving it. I'm not gonna give away the, the punchline, but I, we seem to have, we've eliminated a bunch of possibilities on the far edges. And, and I believe that we're, we're coming to.
Converging center.
We're converging somewhat. Actually, converging quite a lot. That's, would you agree with that, Mike? I mean.
Yeah.
Okay, because.
We've made a lot of progress.
Yeah, I think we did. I think we did. And actually, it's been very interesting working out. I'll make a note here. It was a little bit of an experiment. I've always been a little bit interested in decision by other consensus mechanisms other than the classic, you know, bunch of people sit in a row and vote. And that's the way this has been going. It's known to take longer than other decision-making methods, but it's also known to give better results on the average, and it seems to be working. So I've learned a lot. Okay.
Before we leave that item, do you have any, does the committee have any indication as to the schedule moving forward?
Uh, we're, we have a meeting scheduled for.
22nd.
22nd.
Which is not next week, but it's a Tuesday.
Two weeks from yesterday.
Two, two weeks from yesterday. I suspect, although I can't say, that we will, at that point, probably finish the convergence process. It may take us one more meeting to wrap it up and present it. So I think we're going to see that. It'll, it'll be in February for sure.
Yeah, I think the conversion part is coming down the bank, but I think it's, the, we had a big discussion, Evan, last night was the overlays. And I think that may take a little bit of time, the recommendation.
I mean, so the reason I obviously mentioned is other agenda items tonight and an email I sent was about the, the schedule between now and Springtown meeting.
Mm-hmm.
It may or may not make it.
I, well, what's our, what's our last day for that? I, I would imagine, I, I think there's a very good chance that we could have the public hearing for this on the, the 2nd February meeting. Is that too late?
That's, well, that's likely the earliest that you'll be able to make it. That's fine as long as the board understands that the, the final language.
Right.
The final language for the warrant needs to be submitted no later than February 20th. The reason for that is the Sluckman are signing the warrant Monday, the 25th.
All right.
So legally, it's okay for the planning board to hold their, open their hearing after the warrant's signed.
Right.
But, you know.
It's probably better practice to do it before if we can.
But the wording is locked at that point to go to town.
It's locked in the sense of, it can change, but it's locked in where it can't become more restrictive, it becomes less restrictive.
Right.
And then obviously, we're all aware of, even if you make minor changes, it begins to get confusing and convoluted.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not, my, my, my point is I'm not concerned that you make changes to it. It's that if you choose to actually hold your hearing, which is hold, asking the public for comment and presenting to the public and asking for public comment, after the warrant's signed, some may think that's a little bit backwards.
No, there, there is something to that.
So, but that's, that's board business. It's perfectly legal. And then in, in my, my email also mentioned that your regularly scheduled meeting in February is the 13th. I, I suggested that we may want to schedule a special meeting for the 6th.
Yeah.
And that may assist.
Okay, we may, we may, I'll tell you what. We'll report to, at the meeting on the 23rd, because we will have had a meeting on the 22nd. I think at that point, we'll have a much better idea.
Okay.
Does that sound good for the, the people who are currently on that committee?
As Mike noted, we are on schedule with the subcommittee, but Evan's making a good point with, with public hearing.
Yeah.
You know, the whole point of the process was to hear from the public. Is there any harm to tabling this to a fall?
I don't know. I would like to, it would be nice to get it off of the plate, but if it cannot be done, I don't think, I don't think there's any horrible harm in it, but.
May I make a suggestion? I think there's only three of three members that are actually sitting in on it. I'm not sitting in on it. Maybe update the board accordingly on the 23rd.
Yes.
Even if you have some conceptual verbal update.
Yeah.
That pins down some final.
Yeah. I, we will be able to do that.
Maybe that's a good point for the board to say, you know, let's move forward.
Yeah.
Or let's, let's come up with a different timetable.
My, my, my personal preference would be to get it to April if it's reasonable to do it without, you know.
Yeah, I think we've come so far.
Yeah.
And I think you've got representation of the neighbors on that committee. That if it went from committee directly into the, the planning board to the warrant written without the public open hearing, you may have an issue.
Oh, we're going to, we have to, we have to by law have a public hearing on it, no matter what.
We have to have a public hearing.
Before the warrant.
He said, he's talking about the warrant.
Before the warrant is written. I think if you go and write the warrant and then have.
That would just be bad politics.
No, we've gone so far that I think we owe it to the committee, to the neighbors up there to allow them.
I, I.
Push it to fall.
Well, if that's necessary, let's, let's take a reading on this on the 23rd. We can definitely do that. The next item I want to bring up is that at a meeting, well, I guess you were all there anyway, a meeting on Monday. Obviously, the, the Board of Selectmen has a warrant article that they want us, that, that we would of necessity have to have the hearings for, because it's a zoning article. And what we need to do is, I think, schedule a public hearing for that. Now, don't, don't confuse this with the citizens petition that came in. The citizens petition, if I understand correctly, is for the April town meeting.
So we'll clarify. So the, the, the Board of Sluckman article that you discussed with them. That hearing, that hearing is scheduled to open January 23rd.
That's the next one.
Correct. So let's set that one aside.
Let's go to the other one.
This one I sent to you last week. It was originally submitted for the, for spring annual town meeting. The, Mr. Buckley has since indicated that he wants it for special town meeting.
Oh, okay. So that's a change.
My, right, that's a change as of today. My understanding is that the clerk has certified that.
Okay.
So at this point, the planning board now needs to schedule a hearing for this citizens petition. Obviously, can't be done on the 23rd.
Right.
Tomorrow, we, staff at the, at the direction of the planning board will, will place those legal ads. And you have the potential dates?
Okay.
Yeah, so for the Buckley petition, if we place it in the Little Sun, the earliest we can print it is Friday. We can, you can either schedule a hearing on the 30th of this month. That would be the 14 days notice.
Okay.
Or you can do it prior to town meeting. And the thought process behind that was that the chicken article, to take it out of zoning, would have the public hearing at the next meeting.
Right. And then we'll deal with this one.
Hear from everybody.
Yeah.
And then we'll have the formal hearing on the opposite view of the chicken article.
Okay.
So it's up to the board.
I, I think, given the nature of this article, it probably should not be done in association with the special town meeting. That's a rather cramped and rushed venue, I know, because I've done it once already. That would leave us with another meeting on the 30th, I think?
Yes, we could do the, I could advertise.
Let me poll the board. Can people make it for a, a planning board meeting on the 30th?
I have nothing scheduled.
I mean, I'm, I believe I'm free.
I'm good.
So is the expectation that both of these warrants would go to a special town meeting at the same time?
February 4th.
Same one.
Yep.
February 4th.
Yes.
Would be the special town meeting.
Yes.
The first article on the warrant, which we gave you a copy of the warrant.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is this, the article making it out of zoning.
Right.
If that were to pass.
Right.
This one may be moved, but they also may want a vote on that as well.
Okay. Very good.
Be interesting.
Then it'd be interesting. All right. So it looks to me as if we're going to have a meeting on the 30th.
Okay, so schedule a meeting on.
Schedule a meeting on the 30th. Also, schedule a meeting, just in case we need it, on the night of the special meeting.
Okay.
Just get it posted. So if something comes up and we, we have to deal with it. But, but I think, given what we might see as part of the public hearing for that second warrant article, I think we want to have it in here. I think we want to have it televised. And I think we want it in a familiar venue.
And you think a half an hour before?
Yeah, half an hour before to clean up any, before the special town meeting to clean up any special stuff.
Do we have the option to do any wording changes?
Not to a petition, you don't.
You amended in your report.
No, this is the warrant. This is the warrant article.
Oh, yeah, during the public hearing.
Yeah.
It can be amended, but not the.
The petition could be amended at town meeting though, right?
She's, you're talking about, you're talking about the, the planning board-sponsored article.
The planning board-sponsored article.
By the way, you guys all had the latest.
I take issue with two, two terms.
Language in your hands.
Are we aware of what they are?
That's the language.
What are they? Just so, just so we.
In the edited verbiage, pause should be removed. Because they're not permitted anywhere in town except on commercial farms.
What's the other?
And the second one is in the same line.
No, it's this one here.
Similar livestock should be changed to similar large farm animals. To provide clarity that it no longer includes the small farm animals.
So what I'll do is.
You want to hear something?
What?
USDA does not consider horses a farm animal.
Well, let me tell you.
That's the fence.
I think the word livestock may need to be there for that reason.
My concern is that if it says livestock, somebody like the building inspector is going to interpret that it, that the next paragraph that is not, that has not been modified, applies to small animals.
No. It's a similar livestock.
Well, what, what constitutes similarity in this case?
I, I think it's.
Then how about similar large livestock?
Perhaps. Anyway, those are things to consider.
Okay. So these maybe come up at the public hearing?
Yeah, they'll come up.
And then if the board so chooses, majority vote, you can, you can seek to amend it.
If we need to, yes.
I'll also, I need to just circle back with town council to see how this was advertised. If the advertisement was specific to removal of just game birds, it may be somewhat restrictive. But I need to, I need to circle back with council on that.
Okay. Give that a check and we'll, we'll deal with that on the 23rd.
Mike, I got one other thing for you.
Go ahead.
It's said on a bunch of committees.
Yes, we're gonna need, that was coming up on the list.
On the list.
Uh, he was, let's see, he was on Vinyl Square, wasn't he?
Yeah.
And.
Appointments. Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Yeah, we'll take it in order.
Yeah. While we're still under zoning items, I have another one. Met last night with the historical commission and they would like us to work out some edits to the historical preservation zoning article and resubmit it for Springtown meeting. So I'll be meeting with them again next, let's see, two weeks from last night. The 22nd, to review their specific comments against the previous draft. So that's another warrant article for spring.
Do they have deadlines?
We're working.
We'll advertise it and if it's ready to go, it's ready to go.
Exactly.
But we can advertise that one.
Please advertise it.
Okay.
At what, when would we do a public comment session on it?
It can either be the February 6th or the 13th, unless you want to, you know, have a special.
I would go with the 13th.
That's your regular, that's your regular meeting, which is fine. There'd likely be, historical would be on it.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, maybe another one where, that we're, may discuss this evening.
Well, we're also talking about the, the citizen petition for the.
We've scheduled that for the 30th of January.
Okay. All right. Sorry, but I'm having a hard time keeping all these straight. Do we want to take anything forward for spring in regards to resizing lot sizes? Based on the, the research that I've done in the, the assessor's database, I believe that we really do need to have a lot, a zone classification that is single-family and much smaller than one acre. Because we have a lot of the town that was built to standards somewhere in the, the quarter of an acre to half an acre range. Those lots, those sections of town, if they want to do anything on their property, have to go for a variance because they are undersized to their, their current zoning, all RB zoning. I would suggest that if we want to do something about it, that we should, in the first town meeting, create another zone definition, whether that's an RD or an RB1, RB2. And then in future town meetings, work on identifying specific areas. And then in future town meetings, work on identifying specific areas of town that would be reclassified into that new zone.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The concept is one that has kind of been on the books, been talked about for a number of years. I'm wondering if it makes sense to kind of wrap that into the master plan discussion under land use and zoning. Really codify it, give it an implementation, a time period, and it likely could be fall or spring of, you know, the next two town meetings. That way, there's a good kind of planning process behind it.
I think that makes sense.
I think probably do that.
In terms of the politics of the move, I think that makes sense.
Deceptively, I don't think anyone's going to be opposed to it or concerned. In fact, as you said, it would alleviate a lot of burden on single-family.
It would alleviate a lot of burden on a very large percentage of our population. The, from the research that I've done, it appears that the current lot sizes were set to address the need for sewer systems, the minimum lot sizes.
Well, it's like the Westlands and stuff. Lots of North Chelmsford, lots are so small, every time they do anything, they're coming for special permits.
Yeah, most of them are 5,000 to 7,000 square foot lots.
That's right. They're just tiny.
Same as East Chelmsford, a lot of North Chelmsford.
The Westlands, the farms, I mean, the, the North Chelmsford areas up there, there's a lot of that area. It's just really small lots.
Yeah, there's some, another interesting aspect of it I want to bring up, which is, we have RC. In theory, RC is for two families. In fact, what RC has become is a way to put a McMansion on a half an acre. Take a look down at Mill.
It's true.
Yeah, we're half anyway, you know. I mean, you could look down at the thing on Mill Road, he's not building duplexes. He's building single-family houses.
That was part of the...
That was part of the deal, but we talked about it. But I realize now that that's, given what property values look like in town and what the value is of living in Chelmsford, which is pretty high. People want to live here. That's what's really happening to RC here, is going to be happening to RC. And I think the intent of RC was to offer some smaller, but somewhat more affordable housing in a general sense. And we probably want to discuss that in some detail as well. But I agree, I think,
I think getting this on the master plan and discussing it in that environment probably makes a lot of good sense. I mean, I think just as a follow-on to that comment, what we're seeing across the board in terms of cultural changes is that, both from the standpoint of a younger population is not looking for the lot sizes and the maintenance of the lot sizes that we were when we were that age. And from a aging population standpoint, they have a need to not have the maintenance of those larger lots.
Yeah, this is all something that can be discussed.
Yeah, I think this is, let's leave it. Yeah, going down the round hole.
Yeah.
Okay. I would note that another topic that was brought up by consideration of this, is apparently our zoning maps and our assessor's database are way out of sync with each other. We, as a planning board, can't fix the assessor's database, but I think we can fix a zoning map. And I'm not sure, at this point, if I look at the maps that I can find online, whether what I'm looking at actually represents the zoning that we currently have in every sense. As a matter of fact, I believe it may not, as far as some of the stuff of Route 40 goes, because it's showing stuff as RB that's really RC. We've got to get that fixed. I don't know how we do it.
I'm in the process.
Oh, you're on it. Okay. If you're on it, fine. I'll stay away. I mean, we still got to have to talk to Sam Chase, you know?
It will be fairly short. I'm going to circle back with our GIS mapping provider and have them make those changes online. There's Groton Road and Mill Road.
Yep.
And then I'll ask them to print, print full-scale maps that we can then hang in town hall.
Good.
Are you going to put them online as well to post, repost?
They'll be on the GIS, yeah. We can make PDFs and, you know, put them wherever we want.
Is there an RA district?
It used to be.
On, well, there are some RA districts, but my question is specifically, is there an RA district that is between the Catholic Church and 495 onto Warthen, Westford, and Bridge Street?
I mean, other than Groton Road and Mill Road, the one acre bayou, the map's accurate.
Why do you think that, Nick?
Because the assessor's database is showing RA.
So the assessor...
For all of those properties.
Yeah, so the assessor, the assessor's database does have a zoning field.
Yes.
But it's not, it's not accurate. It hasn't been accurate. I don't know when it started and why it is. I don't believe they use zoning as a primary criteria for assessment. Back in the day before GIS, when land, when master plans were done in the 50s, 60s, and 70s, those data profiles for acreage per zoning district were based upon the assessor's. It's something that would be a great project for, you know, an intern or a high school or college student. But it's not something that, you know, the planning board should be concerned about. The map, what we tell people is, assessors, brokers, realtors, property owners, is you go to the GIS and you click on the zoning layer. And so I think everyone in town hall is aware of that. And that's the official zoning designation, the zoning map theme within the GIS.
When the, when the building commissioner reviews a plan for approval, on what basis does he determine the zone and therefore the dimensional requirements?
So is...
The property card?
No.
Or the map?
Not the property card. Not the property card. They learn that quickly.
Yeah.
He may have come in the first day or the first week and used the left sidebar there. Right. I mean, you know, administratively, you know, between Frank and I, we could call APGEO and say, just delete the zoning district field. And maybe that solves a lot of confusion. So people just don't see it, obviously, and get confused.
Please don't do that.
Yeah.
You hide it, is what I'm saying. You don't delete it from the data, from the master database, but for purposes of the GIS, you hide that field.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's a conversation to be had with the assessors. Certainly, if we can get the maps straightened out, we'll get our end of it done.
Yeah, getting the maps straightened out would be a first move.
Okay. All right. Let's talk a little bit about committee appointment. We need somebody for the Vinyl Square Committee. Is there anybody here who...
Oh, a new guy from North Chelmsford.
Yeah, that's right.
You don't need to know.
Couple of months, so I think someone else should stay on that. Something will have a change.
No, Ed's gone. Ed's gone.
Ed's left.
No, I know, but I may not get elected in April.
Yeah, I think you got a pretty good chance.
Well, depends on what you do for the next couple of months.
It does depend.
I don't know what I would help them out with right now, to be honest with you.
Well, Route 40 for one.
I could help with that, but I wouldn't be able to give them any technical information like my fellow board members can.
I wonder if Ed would like to still go to that every once in a while.
There's no reason not, huh?
No, I don't know if that's, that may be a burden on him.
It might be.
As much as he might love it.
As much as he might. Speaking of which, he couldn't make it tonight because he wound up having a doctor's appointment scheduled right on top of it. But let's try to get him in at the next meeting. And, you know, give him a little bit of recognition, because he's put a lot of time in. Okay, well, that leaves Vinyl Square open for the moment.
And CPC, Community Preservation was the other one.
Okay, CPC.
What nights do any of these people meet? What's going on?
CPC meets the third Wednesday. And while it says every month, it's down to maybe four, five, six times a year.
Of course, we're also the third Wednesday.
No, we're the second and fourth.
Oh, so you're right, second and fourth. Oh, that's right. That's that Wednesday I always have.
They will be meeting for the first time in several months, next Wednesday.
So what does this role do on the CPC?
So the CPC is, per the charter, is in charge of managing the CPC surcharge, the money. They're the gatekeepers, where anyone who's proposing to use CPC money submits an application to them. They review it and then they vote their recommendation to town meeting. For items that are under $20,000, they have the administrative authority to grant the applications. So they're heavily involved in open space, recreational improvements, costs. And the Eagle Scouts do a lot of great projects with CPC money, affordable housing, and historic preservation.
Is this role a voting membership or a liaison?
It'd be a voting member. So this board is going to have to fill this position. When CPC is flush with money, there have been significant monetary requests. Roberts Field is a good example. The Housing Authority on Littleton Road is another example, the two town halls. Yeah, so it's, it's an important committee.
I'd go for it. I could do it. That's one of the few that I could do.
Okay.
Do you have a vote on that?
Yeah. Somebody want to nominate him?
I'll nominate him.
I'll second.
All right. We have a nomination. We second. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Thank you, Henry. Thank you, Henry. Okay.
Vinyl Square.
Vinyl Square. How often does that meet?
They meet once a month.
When?
It's usually, so the meeting this upcoming Monday, it's usually on a Monday in between Board of Selectmen meetings. So it's usually the second Monday of the month.
Give a little idea of what they've been working on.
So that committee's similar to Center Village, where they have a master plan. They're working on beautification. They're working on trying to improve the business climate.
Have some signage?
They're working on wayfinding. They're also increasingly interested in providing comment to planning board projects. Princeton Court is a good example. So they're really energized. And if you live in North and you're on the planning board, I think it would be a great fit. A good committee. And, you know, they're very interested in kind of zoning and land use matters. Since Monica left, they just don't have that kind of, that planning board expertise. But it's, yeah, it's a good committee. It's, you know, it's fairly informal. They're out about by nine o'clock. Not, there's no heavy lifting involved. I mean, they are, as Route 40 Committee is aware, they are heavily interested in the asphalt plant and Route 40 zoning. So I think it's important for the planning board to have some, even if it's a, to have some, you'd be a voting member of that committee, the planning board liaison. But I think it's important to have some communication with Vinyl Square Committee.
Well...
It's not critical to... I don't want to give you a sense, it's not critical to feel right now.
You could try it for three months. Yep. You could try it for three months, and if you don't like it...
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not critical.
But if they get into some technical issues right away, I don't...
Then you scream out.
It won't be right away.
Why don't I come up to the next one?
Evan goes to all the meetings.
It won't be right away.
Okay, if you're at all, the Vinyl Square meeting.
Look at it this way.
I'm afraid to go use the bathroom. Because I know what will happen.
You become secretary.
We reassign committee assignments after the elections.
Yeah, we'll take, we take care of all, clean all on up.
If you want to get replaced, you're going to have to find somebody from North Chelmsford to run.
Well, I guess that's an appointment. Does that need, I don't think that needs a vote.
Yeah, please, let's just have, you know, let's have a vote.
Nominate him.
All in favor?
Aye.
Boom.
Congratulations.
So Colleen, does he get a name plate?
Yes, I've already ordered it for once.
So we get it quick.
I know.
Okay. All right. There are two more items I have here. One is some material that Evan's been working on. Don's aware of it, having to do with a tweak or two to the bayou. And the other one is master plan committee, which is really getting something of a, well, I don't know if it's a late start yet, but I think we need to get this one going. And I want to talk about that a little bit. But why don't we look at the drive-through stuff first?
All right. So I'm not looking for a deep dive tonight. What I've handed out is pretty self-explanatory. What I am seeking tonight is a, is a kind of an acknowledgement and understanding as to what this is all about. Some high-level indication that the concept, as well as the proposed zoning, is within the ballpark. The reason for all that is that I would like to have direction from the board to place the legal ad, to hold that public hearing on February 13th. At that point and at that time, myself, Lisa Maroni, would be more than prepared to do a, you know, a full-blown presentation, answer any and all questions, just like any other zoning public hearing. With that being said, what would be advertised would reflect this proposal.
And then we'd work on that.
As I mentioned, you know, moving forward, the modifications would be within the scope of the legal ad. For some, you know, for some high-level background, I don't want to take too much time. This, to put it simply, if the town wants to see Route 129 redevelopment take hold and become everything that the current bayou envisioned, there's stumbling blocks. And we've learned these stumbling blocks since the adoption in 2016. I'll be the first to admit, you know, I supported no drive-throughs. And I made some assumptions, and I think many of us made some assumptions, one of them being that the marketplace would fully embrace the notion of putting restaurants and retail down there. It's not happening. And we're hearing that, particularly from 197, Bill Ricker Road, they're having challenges finding an acre tenant. So simultaneously, what we're beginning to hear, and I kind of mentioned this in my fact sheet here, is that property owners and end users do have an interest in locating what I'm going to refer to as upscale, fast casual with a drive-through. So when I refer to the town having to make another decision as to how do they want, how committed is the town to incentivizing and facilitating the redevelopment of 129? This is another kind of test case along this path. And so in some cases, you know, the towns need to and choose to kind of modify their vision based upon economic and market realities. That's what this proposal's all about. Acknowledging that, when you skip down to 129's strategy now, moving forward, there's lots of questions. So I'm aware that when you first hear about fast food with drive-through, we know what the, we know why the initial overlay prohibited them. This strategy, this strategy provides predictability in eliminating all of the particular fears related to... related to McDonald's, Taco Bell's, typical freestanding, traditional fast food that we think of today. What this strategy is intended to do is to target upscale, fast casual. Good examples of that are Panera, Starbucks, if you go online and you Google, and I provided you an article. It's not fast food. It's not even quick service. It's fast casual, and it's a hybrid. I'm learning about this as we're going, but it's not, it's not fast food as you know it, it's not fast food as I know it. Again, it's not McDonald's, Taco Bell. As drafted, those types of facilities, under their current business model, wouldn't comply. The zoning as drafted talks about requiring one per property, must be located on an end cap, not freestanding, must have a minimum square footage of 3,500 square feet. The reason for that is, is that if you go online, you'll see a national trend of these fast casuals where it's almost like a post, a post office box, and it's a drive-through, that's the primary business. So what the concept here is to require a minimum square footage, that's somewhat substantial. Letter E requires minimum interior seating. When you get into the articles, the upscale, fast casual is about the dining experience, bringing people into a restaurant like Panera, like Starbucks, where people want to go, they want that kind of food, and they want to linger and socialize. The drive-through is an accessory component of the business for convenience, not a principal part of the business, like a Burger King or McDonald's. Letter F is talking about having, requiring food to be prepared on the premise. So again, it's not principally as a drive-through, takeout. G is that you must provide reusable dinnerware for onsite interior consumption. Again, I'm not making any of this up, this is what the, this is what these upscale, fast casuals are providing. This is their business model. But what this does for the town is that it aims high. It's a predictable higher outcome rather than the lowest common denominator, assuming the town wants to pursue this opportunity. And then the others are, you know, obviously provide for outdoor seating, outdoor eating areas as part of the COID concept. And then if they wanted to dip it in gold, if there was a concern that that part of 129 would be overrun by numerous fast food with drive-through, you could put a cap on the number per district. And finally, you know, my suggestion would be that you keep it on the main arterial, Bill Ricker Road and Mill Road, the areas that are within, that are outside of the commercial exclusion zone, but keep it on the main, the main arterial's not on the side streets. So I know this is very high level, as my kind of fact sheet indicates, this is not, this is, this is coming to you primarily because we are getting real-world feedback from specific property owners that have spent time, energy, and due diligence on their part. They've convinced themselves that this is good, obviously for their property. That was a missing piece. That didn't exist prior to 330, Bill Ricker Road. Since then, 197 has indicated that drive-throughs would help them tremendously. That would likely mean that that site would need to be redesigned, they wouldn't just plop a drive-through in, in their current Planning Board approval. And then Mill Road has expressed an interest. They want to learn more about it. So that's where this is, what I'm looking, what I'm asking for tonight, you know, is the opportunity to provide the public hearing in a forum for, you know, presentation and public engagement.
I got a couple of quick questions.
Yeah.
Like you said, food prepared onsite.
To be consumed onsite.
To be consumed onsite, so you're not, so, but the drive-through, all right, to be consumed onsite, but the drive-through definitely isn't consuming it onsite.
Correct, correct. So the zoning that I'm proposing is to allow the drive-through, but it's not, it's not the principal, primary revenue generator.
You know, what I'm thinking of is Dunkin' Donuts with the amount of traffic they get through, I mean, we're...
So, yeah, so this isn't, so remember, this isn't, when we adopt zoning, we're not doing a traffic review. This, as you know, this needs to go through your full...
I understand, I understand. I'm just trying to say, you're going to allow a Starbucks, but you're not going to allow...
I didn't say that.
No, I'm just, I'm just, no, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, as...
If, if they, as proposed, if a Dunkin' Donuts wanted to locate a 129, they could choose to comply with these standards, or they can, there's a waiver provision here.
Yeah.
And it would be Dunkin's, not Dunkin' Donuts.
Right. So similar, similar to the COID, where I think, as one of the members mentioned earlier today, it's a case-by-case, flexible negotiation. If Dunkin' Donuts submitted to the Planning Board, and let's assume they met all of them with the exception of reusable dinnerware. If the Planning Board thought it was really, really important, the Planning Board could basically force them to comply with that condition. If the Planning Board thought, not a big deal, then the Planning Board can waive that provision, and you'd still have all your architecture. Remember, COID requires higher-quality architecture, so just because Dunkin' Donuts comes in and they do their arches and their color branding, the Planning Board may say...
McDonald's does arches, we don't do...
Whatever. The Planning Board may say, for purposes of 129, we don't mind you locating there, but we want it to look different than your typical Dunkin' Donuts.
You're just looking for a motion to talk about this, to bring it back up.
So, I mean, that's... But I do get, I do get it. I can understand, there's a lot of people watching at home, this is, this is, this is coming to the, to your agenda, you know, we haven't talked about this previously, so I understand the questions, I appreciate the questions. But, yeah, I am simply looking for, you know, the motion to allow it to be advertised within this context.
Duncan's wouldn't be allowed here if food to be, food to be prepared on premises. We have to, what's the definition of prepared? Because even like a Starbucks brings everything in.
Right, so the current, so that language is taken right from our current zoning bylaw. We define restaurant and fast food. So if you believe that, that we have difficulty distinguishing between fast food and non-fast food in town, then that would be, that terminology would be problematic.
We're discussing it now, though, when we're not...
Well, this is good, because it's important to know that if it's dead on arrival, I'd like to know that.
I'm not saying it's dead on arrival, but I'm just saying, we got to discuss it and get everything out.
Oh, exactly, exactly.
A motion to bring this to public hearing at a future meeting, right?
That's correct.
Right, right, right. So these are all great, great questions.
First to think about.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's not time to take this to public hearing.
Have you seen this in action somewhere?
So a lot of, a lot of towns will pursue what's referred to as a formula-based business.
That's right.
Formula-based business essentially achieves the same result.
This is real live feedback from actual commercial brokers trying to get businesses that are not coming.
And again, it's, so while, while those property owners obviously do what's in their best interest, right? They came to the EDC meeting, they articulated, there was, I invited the Chair of the Planning Board.
Yeah, I was there.
There were two, there were two Planning Board members there, Don was on the EDC, there were two Board of Selectmen members there. The EDC fully supports the concept, EDC is aware of kind of the zoning strategy, they acknowledge that they're not the zoning experts. Planning Board are the zoning experts. So what I'm, the strategy I'm presenting to you for consideration is aim high, where you're saying, your zoning is saying, we're not interested in the lowest common denominator. But if you really want to state your case, just like COID, come in and we'll have a conversation. This strategically is saying, we want upscale, fast food with drive-through. And if you go Google online, there are lots of new concepts, many, many new concepts that we're not aware of because they're not even in eastern Massachusetts. This particular property owner, national, national REIT, so they have a broader perspective as to what's going on nationally.
Yeah.
You know, if the Board wants to, we can invite them in as part of the public hearing. Maybe they'll, maybe they'll talk about specifics, but at least you can hear from them, we can invite 197, Bill Ricker Road, and other interested parties. The key, the key here is that it's my job to bring to you the opportunities. If I don't bring these opportunities to you, and you guys find out that I or staff didn't bring them to you, then we're not doing our job. So we're bringing them to you, and we're putting our fingerprints on it based upon what, what we believe is the strategic vision for 129, working with the EDC.
All I was doing was making comments just to get people thinking.
Totally get it.
I know, you just have to think about it.
Okay, I think, I think what we need to do here, we ought to do two things. First of all, well, go ahead, you want to have a comment?
Well, I did want to have a comment. I was at the presentation on this. I'm certainly not opposed to, conceptually, to where it's headed, but I really feel like this needs a lot of work on our part before we take it for public comment. I'm, I feel like this is being dumped on us, short-term, the same way Route 40 was, in terms of not anywhere near enough time to, to think about this for Springtown Meeting, that it really requires pre-work before we, we consider it even to be a draft for public I don't think this is ready to...
Of course not, now. But let me, let me...
I have the conversation of taking it.
Tonight is not ready.
No.
But time is of the essence.
Essence, yes.
And therefore, I would like to make a motion that we actually open and entertain this to a public hearing on the 13th, as Evan had noted.
And I will second it.
Okay, and I would, let me suggest, in the other...
What are you, what are you taking?
Then the other, the other piece of this is, we should probably set some time aside at our next meeting to look at what may develop from this over the course of the next two weeks. Because I think we can, we can start having a back-and-forth amongst us as to what we might propose, and I think we can be closer to it come next meeting, and that will still be a meeting before the...
Time to go, lights are out.
Yeah, before the, a public hearing. But I do think, if we're going to have any chance to present this in April, we've got to have, we have to schedule the public hearing fairly soon. Now, we can always withdraw that if we have to, but, but I think it makes sense to schedule it, so.
Right, and if you don't get it on before April, you're talking even farther out to getting possible tenants, I mean, in there, businesses in there. So, I mean, I agree, time is of the essence, getting this going.
What do we, do we have any new public hearings for the 23rd? Build Development?
Yeah, project.
Yeah.
We're not saying it has to go fast, but what he's saying is, at least plan it.
We'll have plenty of time on the 23rd.
What's this?
You'll have a good amount of time on the 23rd.
Okay, so on the 23rd, we will set aside at least a half an hour, maybe more, to discuss this amongst ourselves, and I hope that we get something circulating amongst ourselves so that we can at least get some of the rough edges off it. And then we can schedule a, we can schedule a public hearing and start that process now for, for, what, the 13th?
The 13th, right.
What are you advertising as being discussed at this public meeting?
Work session.
For the, for the legal ad?
For the legal ad?
For the, the legal ad, the language will be very broad.
Yeah.
Work session, right?
No, 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 no.
No, we have to post the legal ad now for the public hearing.
For a public hearing on a warrant.
You can always pull it if you're not ready for it, is what they're saying.
At least have a work session prior to the...
Prior to even deciding.
We will, we will. What I'm saying is, we have a work session before the 23rd.
We're going to have a work session.
We'll talk about it on the 13th, it'll be public hearing.
Just publishing it.
Ideally, by the end of the 23rd, you will provide some, polish it up.
Yeah, exactly, and I think we should start polishing it up before that.
Much like we do with 129. Any effort or anything that you need from the EDC, Evan noted, the EDC is totally on board. Anything that you need them to do, just let me know.
Okay, so let's start, so let's start working on this. Let's have a serious work session on it, that can be public, I don't care if it's public or private.
Well, it has to be.
It's going to have to be, and that's just fine. And then, and we'll put it up for a public hearing on the 13th. That work for everybody?
Sounds good.
Okay, let's do it. Okay, let's drive through. Master Plan Committee. All right, I've been noodling over this one for a while. I think what we're heading for is something we discussed last time around, is not a complete bottom-to-top master plan. I think there is enough good stuff that we can use as a basis in the existing master plan that we can do this as a, basically based on the changes, you know, cross off all the things that have been done, use the same set of categories, and then expand on the last master plan to develop the next one. That's, that's my thought on how to approach it. Ten years from now, it'll probably need a whole new bottom-up again, but I think at this point, we can, we can do well.
I think we decide on a, on a section-by-section basis.
Yeah, we do, we decide, exactly. We decide on the section, and I think there will be a couple of new sections that we will do from scratch, and a couple other sections that'll just be polishing up of what exists, and there'll be variations in between.
We do one thing, we'll let it head on the top of it, that it's not law or crime.
Yeah, really.
Oh, yeah, that.
Bringing us the master plan.
I don't want to have that thing rubbed in my, in my face anymore, as...
Evan, could you get me an editable copy of the existing master plan?
Sure.
Could you get it, send it to all of us, because we're all going to need it.
You may have to send it out as multiple files.
Yeah.
Because of the size of it.
Maybe put it on a Dropbox?
Yeah, Dropbox.
Yeah, you can do that, send us the link to the Dropbox.
Now, the next thing is, who gets involved? Now, this is traditionally run by the Planning Board, and there is nothing that says that a Planning, Planning Board members can't come to the master plan meetings. In fact, I would encourage it. So I don't think it makes sense to appoint everybody on the Planning Board to this thing as well. I think we probably, I don't know whether, what the right number is, I've been toying with five or seven, I think seven might be more appropriate than five. How big was the last?
Nine.
That was nine. Then maybe seven is a good size for this, but of course...
The question is, what expertise do you want on the primary committee versus pulling people in for specific sections?
Yeah, well, I'm thinking, we need, we need some Planning Board membership on it, we need some Selectmen, Board of Selectmen membership on it.
Is there anybody around that was on it originally that may even had their thoughts and plans on why they did something?
Yeah, you mean, other than George?
George, or it was...
Lane.
Jim Lane, George.
Jim Lane, yeah, there's a few people.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of people that were...
Bob Morse.
Bob Morse.
Bob Morse.
Bob Morse, yeah. If we could get one of them, I don't care who.
Yeah, we can, we can get one of them, I'm sure.
Yeah, just to take and put their two cents in, because usually, sometimes they had another...
Okay, so my, my thought was, was maybe then, two Planning Board members, two public members, probably one Selectman, are there any other boards that we, from which we ought to pick?
Historical was represented on the last master plan.
One historical. And we need one more, are there any other...
If you're going to go beyond Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, and public, and you get into historical, at that point, you know, why not EDC? Why not EPAC? So my suggestion, if it's truly an update...
Yep.
I would do two Planning Board, two public, one Board of Selectmen, and one former Master Plan Committee member.
Okay.
What's that, two, four?
Six.
Five, six.
Well...
You want an odd number?
Maybe two former planning, Master Plan members.
Two former.
And then, and then historical, you bring in as a stakeholder.
As you need them.
EDC, you bring, as needed, right.
I think that, that sounds like a pretty good makeup. And again, particularly for Planning Board members, if you want to go, just go. You know, you don't have to be a member of the committee to go to the committee meetings. But there probably should be two anchor ones who make a time commitment to do it essentially every meeting as often as they can.
Well, there's a lot more time that goes into that particular committee than just the meetings.
It's a pretty intense committee.
It's a very, it's a very time-intensive membership.
Okay, so I, I'm just as happy to not be on it again. Okay, so, I, I'm just as happy to not be on it again, I'll go down there whenever I want to, and which will probably be fairly often.
I would like to be on it.
Okay.
Are you going to point now?
Huh?
Are you going to point right now?
Well, there's no reason not to start thinking about it.
We have two members that are actually ready to go.
Two members who are raising their hands. And the rest of us can, can all join the party, and like I said, I will join the party. But...
We'll send it out to them.
If, does that, does that sit well by the rest of you?
A motion to nominate Nan Dawn?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and, but you'll, you'll have company, believe me, particularly when this starts getting broken down to section by section.
It's a lot of work.
I think some of us, I mean, if we have something that has to do with farming and agriculture or anything like that, I'm sorry, Andy, you're stuck. You know, if it, if it had to do with radio towers, I'd, I'd be there, so, okay.
We'll reach out to the other groups.
Reach out to the other groups, reach out to the selectmen, we've got the basic makeup. I don't know, maybe I should, maybe I should ring up George.
Yeah.
He was here earlier.
He was, and he escaped.
Yeah, he's been chilling out.
Yeah, right.
We need to keep him off, reaching out of trouble.
My folks will kill him if he does this.
Do him a favor.
Well, maybe...
You don't think so?
A motion to nominate George.
Second.
That's why I'm afraid to go to the bathroom.
Before, before we do that, let me, let me...
No, it's all right, we're all going to second, we'll hold him in.
But, but you'll take care of touching base with the selectmen.
Correct.
And we've got the Planning Board piece of it fixed, and at the next meeting, maybe we'll, we'll be at the point where we have a committee, and...
What we need to do, we'll do the advertisement for the two public at large, and then we'll have to invite them in, you'll, right, is that how you want that to work out?
And then the, the two formers, we'll contact privately.
Yep.
And, and see.
Okay.
And then, I, I think we'll all be involved in this, this will...
All right, one more thing. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We can't wait for Mike to say anything.
Very good, thank you.
Aye.
Aye. Well, I guess I'm outvoted.